Pledge of Allegiance. General Father, thank you so much for this great city. It's always an amazing time to be able to get away like I was, to spend time with my family, but then to come back and be excited to be back in a community like this with people that are so connected and do look out for each other in so many different ways. I just ask that you continue to bless this community, get us through these last couple of months of summer, safely, soundly, celebrating what makes Canby such a great place. I ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, we see it. Thank you. Before we get into employee introductions, we do have a special guest here this evening. We are graced with the presence of Mayor Scott Kaiser from the growing, yet smaller city than Canby of Malala. Welcome, Mayor Kaiser.
Thank you, sir.
No, and I flipped Mayor Kaiser garbage because he did it to me recently and I felt apropos that since he was here, I would return the favor. Now, Scott and I have been friends for a long time now and I'm glad you get to see us and not just watch it on YouTube, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm glad that you're here to take notes on how a real city is operating.
Oh!
I am gonna pay for that later. No, I'm glad you're here, Scott. All right, Randy, do we have any new employee introductions today?
Mr. Mayor, we do not today.
Okay. Bullets in through. All right. Next on the agenda is the Third Court presentation. Dun, dun, dun. Do we have a person presenting?
Yes, we do. I believe good doctors here today, so.
I am.
We have a handout as well from your last work session.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll give you one in just a minute. I'll get going.
Okay.
Sit here?
Yep, you can sit right there.
While we had a meeting and brought over people from the city kind of describing how Third Court came about, how development came about, and now it's at a point where we're trying to decide can Third Court be used to access a public parking lot?
Thank you.
Because basically the village has been the public parking lot for the south side of town ever since it was built.
I'm sorry, Dr. Perman, can you say it again? That last line?
The last line, "That village has been the site of public parking for the south side to get to the log-in road ever since it was built into our private parking lots and into the other businesses that are next to us." And so, we spent the last two weeks trying to evaluate and establish the current value of this road. And we put together some numbers to help you understand what it would cost today to build this road and then depreciation over the years and what it has done to come up with a current value of that road. And so, we're trying to help look at what is the value of this road over the last 18 years. You know, Canby's got 18,000 people in it and we have basically 1,500 people who use the road a month. So 18,000 a year, or 350,000 people have used this road the last 18 years. What that adds up to is we have people that don't have to commute basically anywhere except here in Canby. They don't have to go to Oregon City, they don't have to go to Portland, they don't have to go other places, saving gas money, at least $5 for their commute. So the last 18 years, I've saved this community over $2 million by building this because they don't have to go outside the town for the services. So you add up 18 years of commuting, 15 miles, 20 miles, that's five, that's savings of $5. That many commutes come to my, this development, over the last 18 years, which is a saving of the community people here, over $2 million. So it's been a very good development, not only to solve the problem of no commercial property to build on downtown, that's what started it. There was nothing downtown to build on. And then we developed really good CCNRs to keep the development sharp in a nice professional village for professionals to perform different professional business, small business. That's why it developed in its first place, because we had no commercial property downtown. So with that, once we got done building it, it became a public parking spot for everyone wanting to get to the log-in road on the south side of town. With that, we also know that we've been serving the city's agencies, the fire department, the ambulance, the police department. We know, I've seen maintenance trucks use it. We have videotaped of different agencies using this road on a regular basis over the years. So it's been a very good and safe acting road for the community. I know there was a concern about the dimensions of the road or the status of the road. I gave you a report from Geo-Pacific specifically saying it's a very adequate road. The type of traffic that uses this road to access the log-in road and the utility trucks and the maintenance trucks and all the different vehicles that go for the log-in road along with the ambulance and the fire trucks, this road has been very adequate. They drilled holes, looked internally, and assessed the understructure is very solid and very adequate for the service it must provide. Maybe in seven to 10 years, in the report, it says you may have to put on another layer of asphalt, just like we did for Redwood last year. It doesn't need anything underneath. It's served very well and very adequate. Along with that, the dimension of the road, which is 28 feet wide, along with another 10 feet on each side with sidewalks in space, this road is wider than many roads in Canby right now. When you look at Maple or you look at some of the other roads that are down there, we know that those roads are less than 28 feet. There's a lot of roads. Maple Street down to Wellam and Country Club is only 22 feet. The roads to the parks, Echo and down to Parkway, only 22 feet wide with no sidewalks. There's many roads downtown, Second and Third, that are only 26 feet wide, and they have parking on each side. So I think the dimensions of the road are very adequate for the services that it has rendered the last 18 years, and I think it's going to continue to render a great service. Right now, we have two lots available that we can still convert to a public parking lot that's attached to the log-in road. What a great opportunity to have the opportunity to maybe take one of them and convert it to a public parking lot. Echo Park, you go over there in the morning, you'll see 20, 25 cars sometimes. If you go to the park on the south side, those parking, I went by this morning, those three lots it does have in that neighborhood for the park right there were full. And then there were a couple of cars in my cul-de-sac. So I think there's a real need for public parking on the south side of town. And this road just turns out, in my opinion, to be the best option. It has served as a public parking for the entire south side of town, along with the services that it has rendered. And the other businesses that are coming in are also going to be serving the public. This was built to serve the public, and I think it's done a nice job of being an option for our growth. But it's also turned out to be a favorite place for people to drive to to get onto the log-in road, along with the fire department's ability to get to the other side of town. If 99E is busy or if the train, what do we get, 15 or 20 a day sometime? If they're stuck or have any problems, they're going to be using Third Court, and they have already, to get to the other side. And so, I put together a packet for you guys to look at, the fair market value. If we built that road today, it's $1 million. But with depreciation, Canby excavation estimated would be about $550,000 to build just the construction of it today. I reduced that by $200,000, down to $350,000 as depreciation over the years. And the rest is just a normal cost in any time it would be to build the road. And so, I came up with $681,000 as a fair market price for the city if they were to acquire the road. Lot 5 at $180, owner Jack is willing to sell that lot 5. Lot 6 has construction done, understructures in. If we ever wanted to get a bathroom, I can't tell you how many times. We have patients and other people coming in asking to use the facilities, we'll get a drink. Same thing with Dr. Warren, same issue. People coming in asking to get a drink, asking to go to the bathroom. So if we were to convert 5 or 6, 6 is, got understructure done, it could easily be a bathroom be done, but it's more expensive, it's at $350,000. Number 5 is only $180,000. We have to speak with Jack, who owns it, but he's willing to sell it and let the city take over and do their understructure and they need for a little bathroom, very inexpensive bathroom, could put you in there with water, and that's all you need to serve this public. And all the people that use Third Court, I can't tell you how many people walk it every day. And we also know that the walking path from 99E up into now the log-in road is right up against, very close to that triangular park that's right there. That's the bottom part of the triangle on top of that, where it says Redwood Village, with that line, across that line, that's a city park right there, that's a triangle, a triangle park right there. Well, that log-in road, right at the end of it, is where the road, that walking path is going to come up. But what we're trying to do, and I think it's great, is prevent the public from crossing the gates of the railroad, which had been doing that for the last 18 years. I can't tell you how many people come with grocery bags and come down, walking down Third Court, because they just came from Fred Meyer, or they go over the railroad track. So they keep building that fence over there along the apartments in Fred Meyer to make it bigger and better, but they've kept breaking through. Now, maybe it's better now, I don't know. But I know I've had very many years of groceries going across the railroad track. So let's hope that that walking path that we're developing going down to 99E is going to prevent that from occurring. On top of that, but with that development, you're going to have more traffic accessing Third Court to want to take down and walk down that walking path to get to 99E. So there's a lot of things that we didn't discuss 20 years ago on this development. The city and I didn't have any idea that, one, all the city agencies would benefit from using it, but also the public using car access. There was a big debate 10 years ago with Brian and this all started, and we got this written report, and you may look back, and it talked about, well, it's got plenty of access. Well, it does. Plenty of access by biking, plenty of access by walking, but there is no access by car to get to the log-in road on the south side of town. We've got, like I said, 25, 30 spaces on the north side. That's what's always filled. But the people on the south side don't have that access unless they go across town, which many of them do. So my point is, I really feel like all the pics I've sent you, I've told you, this village, when it was built, along with the other businesses on the east side and the west side, both, the commercial business, Rob Musk is another one, he said, "I don't want them in my parking lot." He came to a meeting a few weeks ago and stated that. The airline, airport company right next to me on the west, or on the east side, has said, "We don't want people parking in our parking lot." They do. And then along with all the other businesses, and there's two more buildings going in the village right now. Apparently, there's a PEG problem of one of them getting built. Scott's here to speak tonight, so he wants to talk to you about that. So he's going to be building his professional building as soon as he gets the green light. So it has been the public parking lot for the south side of town ever since it was built, along with making it easier access for the city agencies. I can't tell you how many times I've seen police flying up and around. So we have the facts and we have the pictures and we have the people that'll test them on. I'm the only one, or a few, because it's, you know, it's a vacation week, but I'm telling you, it's time to move forward and get the south side with a public parking lot, and we still have the opportunity to do that. There is not one other piece of land up against the log-in road on the entire south side of town that can be converted to a public parking lot. I didn't plan that, we didn't all think about that, but the truth is that this is the only access for the public to drive by car and be able to have a public parking lot that's butted up against the log-in road. It's the only space in the entire south side of town. That's why I keep asking the city to reconsider, you know, think about. I think it's a very fair price. It costs $1 million to build that road today, and the Geo-Pacific company has said it is very adequate because of its light traffic. We don't have semi-trucks. We don't have big, the biggest truck we use that on a weekly basis is our garbage truck, once a week. And then the other heavy one would be the fire truck, who has used it before. There are no potholes. There's a few cracks of normal wear and tear on a road that's 18 years old, but it's got another 12 years. Probably within the next seven to 10 years, put another layer of asphalt on it, just like we did with Redwood, and you're going to have another 25 years of public service for this road.
Dr. Perman, just to kind of bring this back, bring this to a head here.
Yes.
So the proposal that you've given us tonight is that the city look at purchasing the road in Lot 6?
Or 5, or 5. 5 or 6, depending how much money you want to spend on a lot.
Okay, it's one or the other.
You've got choices there.
Okay.
Both owners have talked to both of them, and they both have said they would sell it back to the city. They would abandon their plant, next plan, and let the city take over the lot and build the parking lot.
So Randy, as I understand it, right, there's been a presentation to the Parks Advisory Board on this?
That's correct.
And what has been their dialogue or what was the presentation and initial questions and thoughts on this? Because it's their, it's the, it's really the ball's in their court to determine if this is even a recommendation that would come to us, correct?
Yep, we can certainly go, Mr. Mayor, we can certainly go back and counsel to the Parks Committee. Dr. Perman handed out information at the meeting I was present at. They did not take a position at that meeting, as I recall, although our council liaison is not here tonight, he was there. And I'm new to this discussion as well. And so, Dr. Perman was kind enough to host us and my department heads, the fire chief for a site tour earlier. We walked it, and the reason we're here tonight is to make sure that you, you all as a council and mayor, have enough information, that you hear the message and the details clearly, they're articulated, so you're seeing what is being asked of you. I think my leadership team is pretty clear as of tonight what the numbers are, what they're being asked of. We have numbers of our own in terms of engineer estimates of what it would take to bring that road up to spec so that it's up to a Canby standard. And we're hearing the narrative, I'm not sure we're all in alignment with respect to the good doctor, that it is a parking lot used by our services. Our director of the transit agency is here tonight. There has been some usage from patients, I would, I think we can agree upon, for dial-a-ride that go into the park, which is a good thing, I would think. But regardless, tonight, we want to make sure that you're hearing the same message that we're hearing, we're all aligned. If you have any further questions, get those aired tonight so that staff can maybe go back and put something in writing officially in the record, and we can bring this to, this discussion to a close, because I understand you've been talking about it for a couple of years.
Number 10.
10, yeah.
We're talking 10 years.
So here we are.
And so, yeah, I just, I just think it's a great option, and I think it has already served the community well for the last 18 years. And it's not just commuting to our businesses, but it's commuting to the log-in road, and that is a fact. And I've sent you pics to show you, you know, and I also have utility trucks and maintenance trucks. No, they don't use it on a daily basis, I understand your point, but they sure would if it became a public road.
Fair.
Thank you.
Questions? Yes, Emily?
I have a couple of questions for the doctor, if that's okay with you. Okay, so to make sure I understand the properties that are being discussed, so it's southeast Third Court, which is the private court, correct? And who is the owner of that court?
Me.
Under what name?
LLC.
Okay, so I have, I have some documents that show it's actually the Home Owners Association or the Property Owners Association that owns the court. Does that ring a bell to you?
That's me, yeah, it's ours.
Okay, so that's, so you, you as?
We run that, Owners Association.
Okay.
Correct.
Understood.
Yep.
And then, so it's the third, southeast Third Court, private road owned by?
It was built under a private entity, in terms of private.
And owned by the association, the Private Owners Association.
The city to guide us on how to build it.
Okay, and then Lot 6, which is privately owned by an individual?
Correct.
Lot 5 that is privately owned by an individual?
Correct, and they're willing to sell them to the city.
Okay, and then, so the options are the road in Lot 6 for one-ish million, the road in Lot 5 for eight-ish hundred thousand dollars.
If you combine the two, that was a combination.
Okay, got it.
The road and Lot 6 is over a million, the road and Lot 5 would be 800 and something.
Understood. And then, you're valuing the fair market value of the road at 681?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I'm clicking through, I'm new to this as well.
That's okay, no, no, no.
Clicking through my papers, I see in our files that you had sent a PSA to the city back in November, or maybe September of last year, does that sound right?
What's a PSA?
A purchase-sale agreement.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I dropped one. And?
And it was like 375,000?
Yes, and I guess that's my question there.
And that's what I was thinking it might be, because I, all I did was, it cost me $750,000 to build it 18 years ago, and I cut it in half, said, "Well, we're partnering, split it in half and we do that." But then I also was told, "Well, you better have it assessed as to what its current value is now and actually do an official," because you're not including the land with that building cost back in 18 years ago. So I kind of missed, you know, I was just going through quickly with the city and say, you know, I, you know, we could work it out and do this, but now that I looked at the real value of what it cost to build the road and the land involved, then I had to go back and reevaluate and make it fair market value.
Understood. So for the council, it is the Redwood Professional Village Owners Association that is the owner of the private road.
Thank you for asking that.
So if we were to entertain, you know, a sale agreement, it would have to be through that entity. I understand the Dr. Perman, you may, are you saying that you're the only member of that Owners Association?
I'm the president and Steve Morgan is vice president.
Okay.
Correct.
Understood.
And Steve Morgan will come tonight, he's busy with another meeting, so.
Okay.
But he's been to several meetings.
Gotcha.
Talking about with Brian, several times.
Got it, thank you, very helpful.
Absolutely.
Mayor, that's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you. Council President has one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we have this noticed on the agenda as a presentation?
Yeah.
It's obvious that we can't vote on anything tonight.
Sure.
So if it pleases my colleagues, my recommendation would be that staff evaluate this proposal, take in input from the Parks and Rec Board and see what our needs are, consult with the budget and see if it's even feasible, and have them bring us something to vote on on a future agenda.
I would agree with that. Just a question?
Yes, Councilwoman Stern, go ahead, sorry.
Now, I understand, is this constant an offer of a sale or just suggested values at this point? Because I understand the owner of the lots are not, haven't signed on anything, so this is just?
This is a suggested?
A suggested value, but this is not an offer of sale?
No.
Okay.
Yes, Councilwoman, pardon?
So if, in the report that I would like, if we're going to continue down this rabbit hole, I, excuse me? I said, if we are going to continue down this rabbit hole?
What, define rabbit hole?
Can we just go to finish?
What I would like to see is what the cost would be for bringing this up to a city standard. I understand that there is some opinions that the road is fine, but in any case, when the city has taken over a road from the county, we have a plan to bring it up to a city standard. And so, this road should be no exception.
Agreed.
There needs to be a cost of what that is, and it's going, and my suspicion is that it will be significant because the road will need to be right widened, the curbs will need to be changed, there will need to be new agreements formed with all of the people who have properties in there, because the fronts of the buildings, the easements of the fronts of the buildings will all change. So, I'm, just a second. That is going to need to be part of this proposal. And I will just forewarn my colleagues that this is, at least for me, it's going to be a hard sell. Even if the Parks Department comes to us and says that they feel that purchasing one of these lots to make it to a parking lot is a recommendation, I think we are in the process of trying to create a bigger plan for our parks across the city, and buying a lot of this size to turn it into a parking lot that could possibly park 10 cars, when really we need something that could park 20 or more, is going to be difficult. Again, I've seen a lot of this information many times, and I really hope that when we come to a final conclusion on this, that there is, that it is put to bed, whether it is the city purchasing the property, or whether it is the city saying, "We have no interest in doing this, this is the reason why," and then going from there. So those are the things that I would like to see as part of any sort of next step from coming out of all of this. And I will just say, what I find fascinating about all of this is that originally, when I was on council, I think there was a proposal, or at least when I was somewhat involved with the city, there was a proposal that we'd just be given the road. And then each time we've gotten a proposal, the cost of the road has gotten more. So we either need to make a decision to buy the road now before it gets more expensive or put this to bed. That's my, that's my two cents.
Councilwoman Stern, did you have a question? No?
No, it's no counts. I'm just saying, it's no counts.
Okay. Any other questions or comments at this point? So Randy, did you, did you message her?
We're clear.
Okay, and Spencer, I know that you're here, and I thought in a previous work session or conversation, Jerry had voiced the possibilities or that we weren't in much conflict, or we are in conflict with city code and whatnot?
With what?
With the public works design standards, the road is not meeting those standards.
Okay, so?
How many roads do we have in Canby that don't meet those standards?
That we own? None. We've recently worked over and taken over roads with, from the county?
Okay.
And, but that agreement with them was?
To bring them to the county.
Very much a large chunk of money on their end for us to take those over.
Right, so what about like Maple Street or down to the clubhouse or, there's many roads that aren't up to standards that you're talking about. So that's why I'm trying to think, okay, what do you mean? What's, what's a standard?
So? We can answer those questions.
Yeah, we can get those answered for sure, but, you know, to that point though, again, there's, I don't recall, there is something regarding Maple Street, and unfortunately, my memory is failing me right now.
It's territorial, you know, there's all township.
So in that, in that vein, talking, comparing roads that are county roads that the city is taking over compared to what a private road would be?
Yeah.
In the larger scheme of things, county roads are part of a master plan for bringing housing into the city. Many of these lots that come off of these roads, there are already houses in. And we are getting, the city is getting a significant chunk of money from the county in order to update those roads to the city standard. And they are part of a master plan of five to 10 years, if, correct me if I'm wrong, of how we are going to get those roads up to snuff. Now, there are areas of the city that have private roads. For instance, the trailer court behind Fullerton's, I believe there's a couple of, there's the, I believe the double-wide park down behind Hope Village. Those are communities that have private roads. And to, and this is the slippery slope that I worry about. If we agree to bring this road into the city and then the trailer park goes defunct, then they come to us and ask for the city to take over their road, to buy the road from them, now we have to do all that. And to get that up to the city standard, essentially, you'd have to yard out all of the trailers, because it changes. because it changes all of the setbacks of things. There is a time when a developer, and as a person who's served on, on Planning Commission, I made it very clear when I was on the Planning Commission, that I think that the code should be changed to deny any request for a private road in the city, because of this very reason. Now I'm so fired up, I can't even remember what I was going to say, but, essentially, when the developer is, goes to the Planning Commission and makes a decision to either-
Would have been nice.
Follow, to either follow the city standard for their road, or put in a private road, when they make the decision to put in a private road, that decision needs to stick. And later on, if it is determined that that was an incorrect decision, I'm sorry, but, this, we gotta, we gotta nip this in the bud, and I am not in a fan of taking over private roads. It's just a slippery slope.
So Jason, or, sorry, Councilor Pat and I will add into the, the conversation too, about private roads, behind Radcliffe House, that those developments, those houses back in there-
That's the ones I was referring to.
Oh, okay.
Those double wides back there, yes.
Or no, I'm talking about along thirteen.
All the houses, yeah.
Yeah, the Cedar Loop.
Those many cul-de-sacs were planned to be independent living as part of the Radcliffe House, and then eventually got developed, and those roads belong to that HOA, along with the street poles and all that stuff, that, again, that have been asked by us, by that neighborhood association to take over and own, and we've not gone down that path, because it opens up a big can of worms.
So Brian, question?
It's actually Mayor Hodson in here, please.
Mayor Hodson?
Yes, sir.
We still haven't solved the issue that's been going on ever since it was built, and that's my question, is lack of public parking on the south side of town. My village has been the public parking for the south side of town, and so, that has to get resolved.
And we're not, we're not ignoring that that's not an issue, we totally agree that there's not, that it's an issue.
And my road has had a history of eighteen years of not an issue of any safety measures, or not an issue of any accidents, and no issue of anything concerning that the road's not adequate to serve the public correctly.
Councilor Waterman.
Dr. Perman?
Yes?
Over the last eighteen years, and even right now, you have, as the road being private and private property, you have full control over-
Oh, absolutely.
Right, so you, you can put up signs, you could, you could dictate who can park there.
Sure, we've done that, we've had signs up, we have sign up right now.
And as a private property owner, you have the responsibility of-
Absolutely, and we'll do that.
And that's still something that can, going forward, depending how the city moves forward, is still your option, correct?
Sure, absolutely, I understand that.
All right.
But it's the only access, and I'm trying to serve the community. That's why I haven't put a gate in the front, it's like, there's no service on the south side for anybody with a car to get to the logging road, that's why they use Third Court. I'm trying to serve the community, and I don't see you guys, you want to, you want to put in a railroad track or something, you know, to, to block it, it's like, I don't understand what, where it's at, so-
We have the numbers, we have the proposal.
Absolutely.
Staff has their marching orders from us, and we will, we'll, we'll go from there.
We want a public parking lot on the south side of town.
Thank you, Doctor.
If I have to bring in thirty people, I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next on the agenda is a street maintenance fee update, and I believe that's Jamie Stickle. And Ruth, hello.
Okay, thank, thank you while they come up, I'll introduce the topic, Mayor and Council. Jamie and Ruth are going to be providing an update tonight, per the request of Mayor and Council. This is not a solution tonight, just an update to show you where we're at in this process. You all have a handout to follow along, and a PowerPoint slide deck. There'd be plenty, as you know, and we've talked about, education and messaging on any updates and changes that take place, but this is sort of a look behind the scenes of our first iterations of correcting some calculations and, and the programming, and just kind of a thirty thousand foot view of, of, of where we're at in restarting this, getting it through the committee and back to your dais, so, with that, Jamie?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jamie Stickle, Economic Development Director, and introduce yourself.
Ruth, Utility Billing.
And so tonight, we're gonna, like Mr. Ely said, we're going to be giving the thirty thousand foot level. The last update that we gave, we kind of, Jerry Nelson, the Public Works Director, and I talked about how we plan to approach the work, and as we've started to dig through, we've been able to get a lot accomplished, and when I say we have been able to, Ruth has been able to accomplish a lot, and so, we're excited to give you an update. I will note before we get started that the presentation that we're showing and this, the handouts are different. So the handouts go with the presentation, just so that you can see kind of where we're headed. They're all drafts, they're all being worked on, but just as a supplementary material, so, do you want me to be in charge of this?
Yes, yes. Okay, so we are going through this street maintenance program, and the agenda tonight is going over this summary, just a brief summary and origin of the program, some conflicts, some conflicts, revenue loss, restructuring, a proposed solution, and moving forward. So the street maintenance program was formed in two thousand and five after funding cuts. It is made up of eleven committee members, and the goal is to create long-term funding for the city's streets maintenance. The committee members come together to assess labor and material costs to set appropriate rates for the fees, also keeping the trips per land use up to date per the most recent trip generation manual by the ITE, and you can refer to your Page One packet for more of a detailed summary. And some of the conflicts, and these bullet points are throughout the upcoming slides, or they have their own slides altogether. Some of them include that the program is based on the Seventh Edition Trip Generation Manual, which was published in two thousand and three. There has been a gap in the program's upkeep, including committee meetings, a change in long-term employees from various departments, left a lack of process manuals. As a result, improper billing occurred and loss of revenue. And then this one is more of a question that has came up quite a bit, so I included it on the conflicts. Single buildings with multiple businesses, what are we doing now and what can we do? And our revenue, revenue loss is at a total street loss of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-seven cents, and this is based on nine accounts post two thousand and twenty-one, with six of them already existing with our, within our Casell program, and three not existing. The calculations were made based on the last known date of completion for those additions, and accounts one through nine have been labeled as such for customer privacy. And other loss, for those three accounts that were not located in Casell, the sewer amount is seventeen thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-three cents, and the parks is five hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty cents, bringing a total of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty cents post two thousand and twenty-one. The reasons why the factors, these accounts were missed, is because the businesses either might have not reached out for new service, unless an employee or Cub lets them know. Customers usually tend to believe that they're paying their, the sewer along with their water bill, and most are unaware of the streets and fees, and the parks fees. Even though we receive a report from Cub for water connects and disconnects, we are unable to create accounts without customers' knowledge and consent. Tracking down industrial customers, industrial, commercial versus residential owners is time-consuming with little to no success. Unlike residential, industrial accounts have less move-out activity, making it hard to flag down. And efforts to mend this issue, welcome to Camby letters were created and mailed out with little to no response. In replacement, vacant door tags were created with great response, and they are delivered by our Public Works and Parks team. And, yes.
Sorry, do you want us to hold off on questions until we're done?
I think it would be best to hold off on questions, just because some of the answers might come up later in the presentation, and it's not a, it's not a very long presentation, so you don't have to-
A few more slides?
You're fine, I just didn't want to interrupt the flow like I'd just done, so.
Thank you, thank you for asking.
Speaking utility service, what are we doing now? I put on here two examples, the residential example is, if you look at the image, there are two different accounts, and one account pays for the sewer, and the other one pays for the streets and the parks. And the commercial and industrial example is one account, the owner pays all utilities, and as you can see, there are multiple services for streets for each independent business within the building. The current move-in, landlord move-in, and landlord-tenant and billing agreement forms are more structured to residential customers, and are the only existing forms of its, of its kind, and you can refer to Page Two on that packet for reference, for those forms. And what we can do is, using the split in utilities for residential accounts as an example, we could split the service fees for one building with multiple businesses, if the owner wished to do so. A process manual has been started for that procedure, and utility sample forms have been created for such process, such as the owner move-in form, the landlord and tenant billing agreement, and a tenant form behind that one, and that is on Page Four and Five of the packet, if you would like to review that. The spaces shall be divided by the building owner, and they all must account for the total square footage of the building. So an example would be one account for the owner, if, if the building only has one meter, the owner must stay as account holder. We are unable to split the sewer costs at that point. And then, the following next, for, for this example, if they had three spaces, we would do three accounts, a landlord and a tenant for streets, and then they would also need to pay the park fees. And using again a residential as example, if a residential owner opens an ADU while both sharing one meter account, the owner must pay the sewer service along with its own streets and parks, and the ADU will now need a city of Camby utility account for the streets and parks. And our restructuring process, we are currently reconnecting the communication links in between departments, such as planning, public works, business license, and utility billing. A task for the Street Maintenance Committee is scheduling timely meetings, keeping these fees up to date based on labor and material costs, et cetera. We are waiting on DKS to update the trips per land use per the most recent twelfth edition of the Trip Generation Manual available as of August two thousand and twenty-five, bringing us up to twenty-two years up to date. And then adding forms to the business license applications, such as a category list, which is on the Page Three of your packets, and then the landlord and tenant forms, the tenant move-in forms on the back of that. And as seen on the previous slide, I did replicate a procedure, procedure, where, just like residenials with shared walls or ADUs, commercial and industrial tenants' accounts will be billable for streets and parks, and finally creating forms and process manuals to fit the new procedure. And I was hoping you could take over this one.
Oh, yes, so one of the things that we wanted to show was what some of these increases might look like. So what we used were the, you'll see at the, the very top line, point forty-two percent, point one hundred and nine percent, point one sixty-eight percent. That is based on the recommended increases that the Street Maintenance Task Force had been considering previously, so, the Street Maintenance Task Force, the last time that they met was in April, and I think at that time, they were charged with providing a written recommendation to the Mayor and Council, once we got some additional information, so, as we're filling in that information, one of the ideas that Randy had come up with was showing what those increases look like. And so we took numbers that had been used for the Street Maintenance Task Force previously, for large businesses, so that very first column at the bottom, the large businesses, medium businesses, small, and then a small church and a large church, just to give an idea of what those proposed increases would be. And I will note that for anything that's not a single detached residential, that is a residential facility, that's per dwelling unit, it says that at the bottom of the page, but just to make sure that that's clear, and that this, we're using this as an example to show you this evening. Obviously, once we bring a full picture back to the Street Maintenance Task Force, we will, they might have different recommendations, so it might not be that they're even considering any of those three, we just wanted to kind of paint that picture. And the Street Maintenance Task Force, we sent them an email yesterday, just telling them that we'd be providing this update, giving them a, a link to the YouTube, inviting them if they wanted to come in person, and letting them know that more, more information will be coming, hopefully shortly, and, and the way we've been working through this, it, it should probably be pretty, pretty quick.
We just made the numbers bigger.
I know, do you want me to go back?
We can, we can go back to that when we have discussion, maybe, put that up there.
Okay, and the solution proposed, after the twelfth edition update, I will complete the final draft of all of the forms you guys have today. I would like to send out universal letters of the changes coming, because it'll take time to review all of the businesses to make those appropriate changes. We will need to review all, so you can, you know, disregard the post two thousand and twenty-one, but I would say review all, because we are updating those categories, and trips per land use. And then we would make individual category and square footage quantity change to those designated customer accounts, and then enter those changes within the Casell program, and finally send out rate increase notice letters with effective date of the rate change. And there's a sample on Page Six of your packet, if you'd like to see that.
And one of the things I just wanted to note is that, that category talk that we're talking, that we're speaking to, it's in the Camby Municipal Code, it's based on the ITE, which is the International Transportation Engineers, got it right that time, categories that they put forward, which is a land use code. So right now, what is listed in our Municipal Code is based off of the, that Seventh Edition, but the hope is, is that by updating it, it can help to clarify some of the, the points that we've had of, well, do we need to look at the whole program or just part of it? Now that we know what the codes are, where they came from, how to keep them up to date, how to effectively apply them within our Casell program, it's actually, starts to become a, a pretty easily understandable effort, and, you know, we're also working on that process manual, so that if, you know, Invasion of the Body Snatchers, Ruth and I, and anybody else who worked on this were gone tomorrow, that then someone new could come in, hopefully read that process manual, and that we're not losing institutional knowledge with people not being with the city any longer.
And finally, moving forward, and these are just suggestions, planning will save records of completion for any building additions made, and forward them to utility billing for an update in the square footage in Casell. A business license will send applications to planning for approval and category, and either business license or planning can then forward them to utility billing. This will also include the landlord and tenant agreement, and the tenant move-in form on the back of that. Utility billing will enter all new information in a timely manner for proper billing, and the Street Maintenance Committee will meet in a timely manner for program review to ensure the program is kept up to date, and that information is passed down to all involved departments.
And I think that that last, last part of that sentence or bullet is a, a great thing to note, that clearly there are lots of departments that have a hand in this, or, or a couple of hands in, in this effort. And so, you know, as we continue on, we're really trying to make sure that we're bringing in information from all different departments, whether that's finance, public works, planning, you know, economic development, how do we successfully set the city up for future success, and making sure that we don't have another situation where we say, oh, we didn't know, and so we, we couldn't have done better. Now that we know better, we're going to do better. Now that we know better, we're going to do better, and part of that is the communication, not just with the community, on any changes that the street maintenance task force comes forward with, but also internally, how we can all support this effort. Let's work together to keep moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much for this. This is a, a lot of work done in a very short amount of time, so thank you very much. You answered a lot of my questions already in terms of strategy going forward, including the street, um, street fee committee, and then, I guess, a couple of questions that I have. So at the beginning of this slide presentation, there were the nine, um, nine accounts that you had shown on the screen. Are those the nine that have been vetted, and are there more that need to be vetted?
I would say a further word audit, you could say, we would need to wait for until those categories are updated.
Okay.
Right now, it wouldn't make much of a sense that we would go back and review them, and then we'd have to review them again for that change.
Okay.
And then, and these accounts, and I think that Ruth mentioned this, but just to make sure, that that was an effort that the planning department put together, saying, this is the development and/or expansions that have happened since 2021. Here's the square footage, here's the category, so they were able to help kind of get us also moving in that right direction, which I think will also be beneficial as we're fact-checking in the future, even with the updated categories, you know, being able to say, we've clearly been able to update these, how do we then go back and double-check those? So it's been very beneficial, the work the planning did.
So, so using the example of count number, account number one, the 6150, that is total loss from 2021 to now?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the other question I had, can you go back, and I'm sorry, to the door tag aspect that you were talking about? Can you explain that to me again? Sorry, I was writing something down and, and missed that, but that you, this was hung on business doors, or?
It's, it's, it's citywide, so the only things they would miss is new accounts.
So this is one, this is a proposed idea, or one that has been done?
No, no, this is already happening.
Oh, okay.
So when somebody moves out, we can't move anybody in, so I've created vacant accounts, so we could still bill, and then once they contact us, or we finally get ahold of them, then we could say, look, it looks like your closing date of purchase is on such date per the Clackamas County Property Records. And, you know, we get a lot of calls immediately, that same day when they have those door tags.
Okay.
And I think this has typically been used with residential accounts, but, but also with commercial, and if it was something that, you know, they set up everything but the street maintenance fee, or something that it could even be maybe amended to include what exactly we need them to call in, connect for.
Okay. Thank you. Council President Hesley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't tell you how happy I am right now. This, getting all of this information in such a short amount of time, I appreciate all your work, and thank Randy for putting this task on you and you picking up the baton, running with it. I, I don't really, you answered most of my questions, I just wanted to give kudos, and also acknowledge that Laura from the task, task force is here, so I don't know if she has any questions, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to thank her for coming, and if you have any questions, I'm sure that Mayor will let you address those. But I am looking forward to the task force giving this information and, and what the next steps are going to be, so I just wanted to give kudos to you. Great job. Thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Sterns?
There. Couple things, you talk about a committee, is that the same as the task force, or is that something else besides?
Well, that's, that's one of the same.
It's the same.
It's the same thing. So this committee, now, maybe because I was new last year, but it seemed like that was sort of created at that time, a, a year ago, but I don't think the committee's been in continuous operation from the beginning, and I don't know that we, as council, voted on the committee matter. Is this going to be something that will be elevated to a regular committee, or is this going to be considered still ad hoc?
Councilor Patton, you want to answer that question?
Sure. So one thing I did want to point out is that some of this is not for a lack of the committee meeting. When the program was initially created several, many years ago, it was that council's decision to dissolve the group. And then for many years, as a concerned citizen, I had requested that the city council either act or recreate that group in an effort to move this forward. About a year and a half or so ago, when I got back on council, I had a louder voice, and so I was able to push for that to be created. The process of creating that committee, Jerry Nelseen, the public works director, and I sat down and created, came up with a list of citizens, of business owners, people who had been on the committee in the past, people who were new to the committee, and then that list was brought to the city council to approve as the group that would become the street maintenance task force for this purpose. The, at least what I had suggested during the, the meetings that the task force was having, once they were having meetings again, was that when they make a recommendation to the council for whatever action they take, to also request that the street maintenance task force be converted into an actual permanent commission or board or whatever, and be added into a more regular meeting. So maybe not every year, but every three years or whatever, when the program needed to be re-looked at. That, at the time, I was, I personally was hoping, knowing that there were maybe some errors and some concerns of, if we start billing at this rate, are we going to collect too much money, are we not going to collect enough money? You know, if the decision was that the committee would meet every three years, that actually the committee meet initially for, like, every year, just to track the, the changes that happened to make sure we weren't, we didn't go too far. And then, once that had been vetted, that, you know, the committee would then become, be put on more of a regular cycle. You know, what, what that recommendation will be from the committee, I don't know, they have not made that recommendation yet, but that is something that I, I would like to see as a city councillor with this program moving forward.
So currently, the, the official committee was dissolved, it was reinstated, but as sort of a ad hoc committee, not as a, a regular committee, and that is proposed, that it'd be changed into a regular committee. A regular committee, I mean, we vote on the members as a council, we approve them, they go through the same process of all the other committees that, that we do. So I just want to be clear on that, because it's almost looked like it, there was something that was going on that wasn't going on from this presentation.
Yeah, no, the, the, the council was presented with a list a year and so, a year or so ago, of who was being recommended for the group, and they essentially blessed it as a whole.
Okay.
And then, as I had mentioned in the previ, in the last meeting, there was a person who was on the committee that had passed away, and the committee took unilateral action to choose somebody to fill that position. And it's my recommendation that when, before that, the council actually received that name properly, and then approved them as the, as the substitute. Considering we originally blessed the, the list, this person should at least be blessed by the council as well.
Okay. That was one question, and I guess, the other thing is, I noticed, and I was really quick when you had the numbers up, but I did a little calculations on my calculator. It seems like the, when, and I'm not sure what the difference between a large business, a medium business, and a small business, and that might clarify a little bit, but my brief calculation showed that a large business was charged 15 times that of what a small business is, and a medium business was char, or, um, a, a large business was charged about six and a half times what a medium business was, and that looked a little odd, because of my mind says that this should be, you know, small, medium, large should be sort of evenly spaced, but it could be part of the, wherever the, what a large and what a medium and a small.
So I think that the best way, and, and Ruth said it, and was, it's, that it's based by the category, so you could have two businesses right downtown next to each other, and they could kind of seem like they're similar businesses, but be charged differently, even though they're both small businesses, even if they have similar square footage, it's based off of the category of use. And so if one of them has more trips attributed to that category of use than the other, then it would be higher. So that's why it's not necessarily, you know, I'm just going to, for easy, it's not just doubled from a small business to a medium and a medium to a large, it's all based on that category of use.
You just seem kind of weird. And so that leads to another question, so category of use, so I build a building, is the category of use fixed when I build the building, or if I get different tenants with different categories, is that going to change?
It's going to change.
And how will you guys know that me as a landlord just rented out to a tenant that has a different ITE category when I have no clue what an ITE category is myself?
ITE is the International Transportation of Engineers. They put together.
What I'm saying is that, I, I heard what you said, but if I was a landlord
Right.
and had no idea what that meant, how would I even communicate to you guys?
And that's why we have people do their business licenses, and I know that not everybody does, but we try and get as many of our businesses to have business licenses as possible. If we have somebody who doesn't have a business license, then I think that there are ways to encourage them to do so. And with the, some of these proposed recommended changes that we're having come forward, increasing the amount of information that we have coming from the businesses and the property owners, and working with the different departments to have some better systems in place so that we can track when someone's moving out or coming in. And I also think that one of the things of, of not reinvigorating the, the committee, but having a committee that is meeting more often, that they can help to address those where they might say, hey, did you see that this business went in? I think that's one of the things some of our committees are, are very good at, the reason I'm pointing is because we have a committee chair here who says, you know, I see work beginning here, you know, I, I want to make sure that they're following XYZ in the code. And so having more eyes on the ground, whether that's in city, with city staff or within the community, is helpful. I think some of these documents that Ruth has put together will be helpful. And, and unfortunately, there are going to be, be people who try and skirt the rules or skirt the system, and, you know, hopefully, once we get everybody back up with the audit and, and, you know, at our, our fighting weight, I guess, then we can address those as they come, so that as we see a business is changing, or a, a tenant is, is, has left and is coming, a new one is coming in, that we're able to have some checks and balances to be able to track that and better apply this program to individual businesses or properties.
Okay.
Can I add something really quick?
Yeah.
Sorry. I forgot to mention, I'm sorry, and these, these forms will also be available on the City of Cambie's website, along with the residential move-in forms, so we're making it accessible for anybody in the public. And, you know, we can add some more information on the homepage, anything that will help facilitate the knowledge to the new business owners or business owners with tenants, so they are aware. And if you look at the move-in form on your page five, I believe, it has all of those details.
Well, and, and it's kind of one click, because my, I currently occupy a building that has in it a couple of tax offices, attorney's office, a software developer, a, a, at one point, I don't know if they're still there, a liquor distributor, a massage, or a tattoo place, and a hair, hair salon place, and so that one building has a whole bunch of different types and potentially whole different, you know, ten different classifications maybe, and how are you going to split that amongst, amongst the, or currently as a tenant, I don't directly pay for this fee at all, as my, my landlord, I assume, would, would pay for it. I, I, I'm just thinking that it might be investig, be good to investigate a simpler way of maybe just straight square footage or something like that, rather than a complicated system where you're going to always be kind of out of date from what they really are. And that's why I'm just thinking that simple might be better.
On, on page two of splitting the utility services, we do give an example of an option of what we can do, and then also on one of the slides, what, what was that slide? Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I, I see where you.
Or the previous one, is what we're already doing, where the commercial, the owner pays all utilities, and then if, like, for example, your business would be listed on there as a street maintenance fee, and then your quantity would be on, or the square footage would be on the quantity section. And, and I.
I think what I'm hearing Councilor Sterns say is, maybe as part of our research, look at straight square footage as well, and maybe you're already doing that, but I just want to make sure.
As an alternative, right now, the way I see it is square footage plus category, 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 and the category in a large commercial building with multiple tenants is going to be constantly in, in flux, and I'm, I'm just afraid that the current system, as we've noted, there's been money lost already because partly due to the complexity of the system, and I think a better system would be one that's less complicated and be easier to comply with, rather than always wondering whether, you know, the corner suite, you know, and I've, since I've been in that building, I've absorbed three different suites, and so you get these complicated things that happen, and, and I think that the more complicated it is, the, just, there's going to be error creeping. So I, that's just my point, it just seemed like, like a real goldware machine, rather than something simple and easy to anybody walking down the street with the, you know, if two people come up with two different, you know, prices based on their opinion of exactly what's being done, it's just, I think it's too complicated.
And part of, I will just say, that part of this slide came forward by talking about the building that your business, that your business specifically resides in, because I think it's a great example, because there is some office, there is some retail, and, and I said, so would it just be whatever the majority uses? And then Ruth was able to explain and, and then show that it, that it is actually broken out by the businesses, but that's certainly something that we can continue to look into.
That was just my point.
Thank you.
Councilor Waterman?
One thing, I think, we talked about it a little bit, but it'd be good to know too, because, in fact, the sort of Daniels, or Councilor Stern's point is the administrative heft of keeping track of all this and bringing stuff in as well, kind of like, you know, what, what, what are we, what's the cost benefit of that, trying to keep track of all this first, and maybe something a little bit simpler as well? But the other, honestly, so the other concern too then is, for me, is landowners are incentivized or not incentivized in certain ways to pick certain types of businesses based on traffic that they get in to, on whether they are going to be charged. I know they can pass it on, pass the, down the triple net, stuff like that, but also, you're also kind of giving property owners, like, well, if I focus on this type of business, I don't have to, there's not as much payment on my neck versus this type of business, et cetera, as well. So maybe something more straight, flat, gives a more equal setting across the board as well for the type of business that property owners would be incentivized or not to bring into our community.
And I think that, that both of your kind of final points of, of really looking at how the street maintenance fee can be better applied, that, I, I would imagine, or at least my hope would be that, that would be discussed at the task force level, so that they're making those recommendations on, you know, this is how a, how we'd like to see the program in the future, whether that's updating it with how it is, but updating it to the, the newer codes and, and, you know, streamlining it that way, or if it's, it's kind of to take a different route. But, but certainly, I think that that's a worthy reason to look into what else other cities are doing.
We're solely, I use that word loosely, looking at trip generation on our roads that these businesses create.
And square footage. I mean, it does.
Square footage is involved, but not to the point where, for example, if for some reason Columbia decides to leave that space, and we put in a, a server farm, not that we can or would, but that's going to generate tremendously less trips than the distribution center that was there before. So, you know, again, it's a different category. I kind of like the category piece, that's how we've been operating is under a category, it seems like. It seems like these have been revised categories a little bit. And by the sounds of it, again, also capturing some of the square footage as an aspect of the fee.
So there's a formula. I, I actually want to give credit to Judy, who built this entire system. And she did an amazing job at putting together this formula and, and it's the trip amount times the rate that the city appoints, which is that 0.522. And then that's divided by the gross square footage. And that gets our casel rates. And the only thing we are left to do is enter, update the category number and the square footage. So if you stop and take a look at every single point, yes, it's complicated, it's difficult. But as long as we're communicating and the businesses are letting us know and such, it's, it's a matter of entering a few numbers.
And I was going to say, I think that some of the complication, just when, when finance, there was a great turnover in finance, so we lost that institutional knowledge. And our, you know, if you think about it, our parks and rec fee, it's the same amount if you're a residence or if you're a business, and so that's equally applied. And so I would assume that I would sit down and say, well, if one maintenance fee is like that, you know, okay, so you put the $5 in and there we go. And so I think what, now that there is a better understanding and a broader understanding of how this is applied, I don't think that it is as much of a time issue as it might have been leading up to this. And, you know, most businesses apply for their business license on a yearly basis. And so that gives us an opportunity to revisit. If we have a business that we hear goes out of business or they stop services, you know, there is an opportunity to revisit. So I think that some of those, again, those checkpoints are there, but, but we'll be looking at all of this as we continue to, to move forward through this process.
Counselor Patton.
Yes, thank you. So in looking at this, you've identified nine accounts that have been, been, been mischarged, six that were in the system and three not, correct?
Correct.
Of those nine accounts, do you feel that there are more that are not being captured?
By the category, yes. Not by the square footage. This, this is only the square footage that was missed. By the categories, because we're so far behind, there's no point in, in going back now, at least.
Sure.
So we would have to wait till that update happens to revisit all of the existing accounts and properly categorizing them. And some of them may already still be the same, but, but per the, per the senior manager for the member services and the traffic engineer, senior director, they highly advise that we replace the seventh edition with the new 12th edition Trip Generation Manual. As they state, there has been a very large number of changes since the seventh edition.
Well, yeah, I would agree. We should have changed it for the eighth, ninth, tenth, all of that stuff, right? I, I guess what I, what I was just trying, what I was trying to understand and wrap my head around was when this whole thing happened, I was, based on the consternation that was coming of all of this, that there were essentially hundreds of accounts that were not being billed either the correct amount or at all. And so there was this, there was this huge crisis. So I was a little surprised to see that really, off the top of the head, there, off the top, there's really nine that are identified that are post 2021.
Thus far.
I understand Counselor, Council President Hensley.
I'm curious what the categories are going to be.
Yes, and I would like to continue, if I may, please.
Of course.
Thank you. The next thing I would like to say is, is this still the best way of doing it? Originally, Cambie was one of the few people, one of the few communities that spearheaded something like this way back in the day. And as I understand it now, there are, there are quite a few other communities that are doing a street maintenance program. And as it's been mentioned, as it's been mentioned before, this is a fairly complicated system. And we understand that you folks on staff only have so much time and you are doing, doing a lot. And to Counselor Stern's and Counselor Waterman's point, I would be very curious if maybe there is an easier way of doing this. And to their point of saying, you know, maybe the complicated formula is getting us the maximum amount of money, but it is costing us a tremendous amount of time in staff time, as well as generating a lot more potential for errors of things not being billed properly. Whereas if we take a look at some of what some of the other cities are doing, maybe they have developed a, a formula that is kind of a bridge between those two. And so I wasn't sure, in the past, I had mentioned about having staff go out and, and look at other, other ways of doing it. And I wasn't sure if that has happened or if that's something that you're planning to do.
I think that that's something that, that staff and maybe not necessarily Ruth, or maybe it would be, but would be able to, to focus on, you know, Jerry Nalzine and I have both been part of that street maintenance task force as, you know, staff liaisons. And so it, that, it might be that the onus is put on us to, to look at what other cities are doing and see, you know, especially, I think he's well more versed, much more well-versed in this than I am. So have a better understanding of who's doing it well. Maybe we're, we're still doing it well and with a little bit of an update, it works just fine. And, and just back to the staff time, I, I don't think I noted this in the beginning, but this is a, kind of a special assignment for Ruth at this time. So this is her major focus. So her focus is to get us up to where we can, you know, start to revisit with the street maintenance task force. And so I would imagine that, you know, I know Spencer's here tonight, Jerry Nalzine, myself, Brianna from Planning also, has been part of that effort so that, that then there can be a collective, here's where we were, we are really at with our, our real numbers now that we have a better understanding. And is this the best way? Here's what other cities are doing. And then maybe the, the street maintenance task force, that's one of the things that they revisit as they get this information moving forward.
Yes, I, I would, I would really love to see that. And if it turns out that, you know, we, our, our method is, is working great, then, then that's fine. But I think it's always for a program as old as this is. And has not really undergone any changes, considering we are how many additions off as far as this calculation, it just might, it's always good to take a look at these things and see if maybe there's a better way of doing it.
Absolutely.
The other thing I will throw out is excellent work. I'm glad to see some progress being made on this. I was, and I have not seen the email yet, but what sort of timeline are folks comfortable with as far as finishing up this work, getting some, getting some, the recommendations either up, like the options, I should say, updated for the task force, for the task force to then meet again to pick up sort of where they left off?
I don't think that we have a full timeline of when exactly we'll be able to meet again and bring this forward, but we are working as quickly as possible. There's about a 90-day time period put on this special effort. And so, you know, and we're, what, three weeks or so underway? So we have some, some more time and some more things to accomplish, but also at the rate of which Ruth and, and staff in general have been able to get information and be moving things forward, I don't know that it would take the full 90 days.
Okay. And I, the reason I ask is, I just want to make sure that if I'm, if I'm out in the community and someone says, what the heck is going on? That I say, well, you know, city staff is still working on this, expect it to be a few months rather than a few weeks. So that way I'm making sure.
I think a few months would be accurate, just to make sure that we're covered.
Months.
And we'll, we'll continue to work as quickly as possible. And, you know, I, I just feel very grateful that Randy, you know, was able to dedicate some additional staff time to put towards this. So this isn't an indefinite, we will just get back to you, that we are actively working day in, day out, able to provide this update tonight. And we look forward to being able to revisit with the street maintenance task force and also bring back more information to you all so that we can make sure that our street maintenance fee and, and program is, you know, serving its highest best use.
Yeah, because I just want to make sure that the information that the, that the task force gets when it gets, when it meets again is complete, concise.
Yeah.
All those things. And so I want to make sure that you folks on staff have adequate time to do that and not be rushed. So that that way, you know, we've waited this long to make sure we get this right. You know, I think waiting a few more months is, is not unreasonable. So I just want, I'm not, I'm not trying to be tyrannical or pushy. I just want to make sure that if something, if someone says, what the heck is that, those folks doing? That it's like, look, you just need to cool your jets. We've still got a few more months before we're ready to move forward with that. So, okay, thank you very much.
And hopefully, all the street maintenance task force members who aren't here tonight are watching at home, because what else would you want to do with your evening? And join us virtually and hear about this update. So I'm sure that they're watching and they're ready to hear back from us in a couple more months.
Awesome. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Patton, any other questions?
No, that was it.
Counselor President Hensley, did you have something?
No, I know that Teresa's at another meeting, but Laura's here. No, also, I did thank you for your, your work in this, but the other piece I wanted to mention is very, very good idea. And I hope the other departments follow suit in having that procedure manual written down so that, you know, if the invasion of the body snatchers happened or whatever, you know, you get a dump truck accident, something.
Well, I used to say, if I got hit by a bus. But I think that, you know, I'm not doing any favors on the marketing and sales front for our good friends in Cambie Area Transit. So now I say invasion of the body snatchers.
There you go. There you go. But no, I, I think that's something that all the department heads should follow suit on. That's, that's perfect. Thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
Counselor Maldonado, you had something?
One, great job. Absolutely great. And just to save some time, if I have questions further, would I reach out to you directly or would I reach out to Ruth?
I think it'd be best if just if both of us, or if you want to reach out to me and I can share them with Ruth and, and, you know, we have kind of a little team that's working on this as well, like Jerry Nalzine, who wasn't able to be here this evening, because he is officially a grandfather as of today. Said that I could make that announcement.
I will be sure that I bring that to his attention even further.
Oh, I, yeah, he's probably.
He's earned all that gray hair.
He's, he's probably watching from, you know, the hospital, knowing him. But, but yeah, if you, if you wanted to send them to me and then I can, we can work on them together. And part of the only reason is just because her email's a little bit different.
Totally fine.
So, yeah, that would be best and then I can make sure to get those answered.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You can also just go directly to Randy and he can forward them on as well.
And if you guys have suggestions or would like any modifications to the forms and the packets, if you want to write them down on it, scan it over to me and then we could get together and then finalize what the forms will look like. We could do that too.
Nice.
Real quick question.
Yes, sir.
Real quick question is, so whatever, let's just, for example, Columbia or the bill that I'm in or somebody, whatever they pay for street maintenance, is that a public information or is that private information? The reason I ask is because we, because sometimes you get a system going, it's good to have a few concrete examples that we all know about and say, okay, this is the, you know, to see if the system makes any kind of sense. Or is that something that would be private and not be, be appropriate to disclose in our, either to us as counselors, I don't know, however legally that works.
Counselor, we'll have to get back to you with the official answer, but I do know that we protect social security numbers.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't millennial that, but just to say, hey, how much does, you know, because I know property taxes, I can go any building in the whole, in the whole city and I can find it out right away how much property tax they pay. And so it's not really private. But I don't know if this is or isn't, but if we're having a nice, weird system or whatever that we think is the greatest system in the world, if we had a few samples, it'd be a good way to touch base with reality. I mean, if, if it's legal and, you know.
Sorry. So what, sorry, I missed the first part of your question. What information do you want to see or are you?
Well, to see a bill, so, so we said a particular building and we want to know how much they pay for street maintenance fee. I can, I can find out how much they pay for property tax without any problem, but is that particular fee a state secret or not?
Let me check and get back to you.
Counselor Patton.
I know historically that when we've had these conversations, it has never been, there's been some concern about like providing specific accounts, essentially like building X or customer X. And whenever that data has been looked at, it's been done by the category. So it's essentially like, here is a sample of large businesses that are paying this fee. Or we have taken five large businesses that are in the same category and are in a similar thing, and this is on average what they're paying. So that no one person can really tease out and saying, and say, oh, well, this person is paying that or that person is paying that. Because essentially, from what I remember, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be providing that information for like individual residences. So the business would need to be treated similarly.
I agree.
So that, that is how it's been done. That's how it's been done in the past.
Well, my point is I can go to every single residence in Cambie and tell you exactly how much property tax they pay.
Sure.
There's no secret there and.
But you don't know how much their electric bill is.
I don't know, but, but the street maintenance fee.
Or the water.
But one of them is a public tax and one of them isn't. And that's, and, and obviously there's, there's an answer that Emily will come up and say if it's legal or not, then we decide it's a good idea. If it's not legal, even if it's a good idea, we won't do it.
So next steps, Jamie.
As far as the next steps go, we're going to continue to, well, we're going to go back to work on this and continue to delve into this program and, and we'll be working with city staff. And then as we have another update to bring, we'll bring that forward, work with Randy on that. And then, you know, in the next couple of months, maybe sooner, we'll be reconvening that street maintenance task force so that they can have this information and, you know, start to consider what their recommendations for changing are, if any.
You made the ask about having, you know, us take a look at the forms or whatever and kind of quote unquote, beta test it. It might be something to worth, since there is such a diverse group on the task force, to send them those forms and have them fill it out and see easy, not easy, what should be done differently or whatnot.
That's a great idea.
So I think that, that would be versus us, you know, we're all smart and all, but they're the ones that, you know, put the, put it into real life, so.
I was hoping you were going to make like a self-deprecating joke and I could really like, but you're the mayor, taking care of things.
I just got back from vacation, so I'm trying to avoid the self-deprecation right now.
I think that's a great idea because we have businesses, large, small, residents, all part of that. And so that's definitely something that we can work on.
Well, thank you both. You've done a lot of work in three weeks and so really do appreciate that. So great job. Keep it up.
Mr. Mayor, off agenda.
It's Todd. You're being requested in the booth.
Thank you.
All right. So next on the agenda is the opportunity for citizen input and community announcements. So there's an opportunity for audience members to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Who are attending in person, please go to the podium in the back, fill out a yellow card and hand them to the WC recorder. She will record them and make sure that I get a. Okay. Okay. If, do we have any, and so if, if yellow card, do Teresa, our deputy recorder, she'll get them to me as she has just done. If you are not able to attend but want to tune in and provide comment via Zoom, Teams or whatever other home office tool you want to use, please notify the city administrator before four o'clock on the day of the city council meeting. Teresa, do we have anyone online? We do not. Okay. So I've got two, one will hold. Ms. Palmer would like to talk to us about landmark commission projects, comma, good news. We like good news.
Good evening, everyone. So I was here last in April. And I talked to you then about, we had just gotten, the Heritage and Landmark Commission had just gotten a grant. And I shared with you the three projects we were going to work on. I didn't share with you one of those projects because in between the time we applied for the grant and we actually got the grant approval, the property owners started having some questions and some issues and they wanted to resolve those first. So thanks to Emma Poracolo in Planning and Tyler Neiser and one of the subject matter experts from the. matter experts from the state historic preservation office, we managed to meet with Mary Hadlin and answer her questions. And she has agreed to go forward with, um, our project number one, which I didn't tell you about, which is putting the historic city hall on the national register.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah.
That's huge.
I've been waiting for that for 10 years.
Yeah.
I'm pretty happy. Um, the really good news about this whole process is because in 2016, we put that property on the local register, we've already done some of this, the work from, that staff usually gets, you know, takes staff time, which is the neighborhood meeting, the public notifications, the public hearings, and also putting on a historic zoning overlay. That historic zoning overlay is already on the property. So, um, the application has to be in by November 1st. Um, the state will consider it first and then it will go to the National Park Service. But I don't think we're going to have any problems at all. That's a great property. And I think they, they would agree with that. The next item, as you may recall, if you were here in 2023 on the council, we had Mary, after completing the rehab of the city hall, um, applied for the Demuro Award. For those of you that don't know, Restore Oregon is the nonprofit statewide that has the responsibility for promoting and recognizing historic property efforts. And they have a program, an award program that recognizes excellence in different categories of historic preservation across the state. And the Demuro Award, that was the first one that anyone in Canby had ever gotten in 2023. And I found out that this year we've had three property owners that have applied. And the property owners have been notified that of the, those that have won and those that didn't, uh, there was, as I said, there were three. It was the Mark Prairie Schoolhouse Rehabilitation, the, um, old former city, uh, police department building, uh, for what they've done to repurpose that building. And then also a home on Brimmer, uh, Street, which is outside of the city limits, but still part of Canby. And, um, that is an old 1900, midnight, early 1900s Queen Anne owned by someone who was on the Heritage and Landmark Commission. Um, it's the Freeze Home. And so one of those people, I know from talking to the property owners that one has actually won. One has been told they didn't win and I have not been able to get a, a status on the third property yet. But no matter what, we're going, either going to double or triple if we have two winners, uh, the number of Demuro Property Award winners are here. So that is really positive for the city.
Great job, Carol.
Yeah. I wish I could take more credit for that, but I can't. And then the last thing, in front of you, I had Teresa pass around. We've got a, a letter that I wanted you to see that Tyler and I got from the Oregon Heritage Group. They want to bring their biannual meeting of all of their committees, they have four city commissions, four, um, excuse me, citizen commissions. They want to bring those meetings that they have every year, every other year to Canby this year. And so on there, I thought you'd like to see why they want to come here, which is, we should all feel good about. Um, so that is going to happen October 15th and 16th. So what we'll have is about 40 to 50 people here in town from places like Roseburg, Astoria, Yumitila, all across the state. Um, also many from the Portland area, um, in town for two days of meetings. And during that time, they will also be doing heritage tours that we are conducting, that I'm arranging for them. Um, and today Tyler and I met with Shatreen Craig, our new, uh, chamber director. And we talked about what can we do to make these people feel welcome and to make them want to come back to Canby and feel good about it? And also to help the businesses downtown because these two folks are going to be walking around, they're going to be wanting to shop and to eat. And so, um, and plus I'll be doing one of the tours downtown. And so we, um, talked about having a banner put up, a welcome banner on the, the arch, which I think is a great idea. And then also maybe having some kind of like passport kind of program where if you're wearing your Oregon Heritage badge and that identifies you as either a member of the commission or as an Oregon Heritage staff person, that maybe businesses, some businesses will want to have special discounts for folks like that. And we can always, you know, provide that in a, each, uh, commission member will have a packet of material about the places they're going to be visiting. I'm working with the Oregon Heritage Staff now to put those together. And, um, so we can also give them information, or I've talked to Shatreen about how can we get them additional information in their packet about Canby? And possibly then list the businesses that they would, that are offering special discounts, you know, like 5% off to that sort of thing. So that's some of the stuff that we're working on.
Carolyn, fantastic.
Yeah.
Wow, that's very, very exciting to hear and, uh, thank you so much for you and the commission's work and, uh, continuing to figure out how to keep Canby's buildings, uh, safe and sound and, and for the future. So this is wonderful. This is a great update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
Before you leave.
Yes.
Um, how, and I'm sure you've been in, in-depth conversation with, um, Ms. Stickell, but what can we as a council help with for these items?
Oh, um, I have asked about, um, having you give a, a welcome to these people that are coming to town. So that is something that I'm, I think is nice to have happen to, so.
I will.
And they're going to get back to me with what would be the appropriate, uh, there is a place where, you know, all four commissions will be meeting together and that seems like probably the very logical space, so.
Okay.
Yeah. And I really want to thank Tyler. He is doing a great job of getting all of the, the things set up, like where are they going to meet and getting, making sure that all the things are taken care of, so.
Perfect.
Yep.
Amazing. Thank you. Great job.
You bet.
All right. The other public comment card I have is for the second one later this evening. Uh, so we'll move into the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda that includes the approval of the July 2nd, 2025 city council regular meeting minutes and the appointment of Leah McCarthy to the planning commission with a term ending December 31, 2027.
Second. Motion been made by Council President Hensley and second by Counselor Maldonado to approve, to approve the consent agenda, which include the minutes of the July 2nd, 2025 city council regular meeting and then the, uh, appointment of Leah McCarthy to the planning commission with a term ending December 31st of 2027. Any discussion or question? Yes, Counselor Patton.
Yeah, so I did just want to point out, and this was, uh, an error on my part. Um, when we interviewed Ms., um, no, I've just forgotten her name, Mrs. McLean?
McCarthy.
McCarthy about, um, for the position, the open position on the planning commission. Um, it kind of happened fairly quickly and we did not include the mayor in the interview process. It was Matt Ellison, the chair, Don Hardy, the staff person, and myself as the liaison. So, in the past, the mayor is usually present in those things. Um, and so if there are any concerns, I, I, I will say that she did excellent in the interview. We think that she will be an excellent candidate for the planning commission, but because the proper policy, the proper, proper procedure was not followed, if there's any concerns, we can, we can go back and redo the interview. Um, it's entirely, it's entirely up to you.
No, and Counselor Patton, I, I really do appreciate that and, um, I don't, after looking at it over and hearing who was involved in the interview, I don't, I don't have a problem. I don't see a reason it needs to be held up by the council. That's my two cents on the matter. So, um, hopefully the rest of council doesn't see that as an issue either.
Yep. If you're good with it, I am.
But I appreciate that. Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments or questions? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seen none. That passes 5-0. Uh, next up, we're moving into, um, ordinances and resolutions. First one up is ordinance number 1651, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Connell Construction and Demolition Corporation for $2,090,927. And that is up for a second reading. And this is pertaining to a park.
This is, this, so this is second reading. Um, I believe that you all got the rendering, uh, that came out.
That is the updated.
That is the updated rendering.
My question.
Yeah, okay. Um, but yeah, this is a park that we're really excited to get going on. Here for kind of any questions?
Thanks, Spencer.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you for providing the, the final, or a final draft. That's great. Uh, any questions or comments? I know that this was talked about the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
You guys vetted it pretty well. Okay, Spencer, thank you very much. Um, if there are, is no question or discussion on it, I'll take a motion. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 1651, authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Connell Construction and Demolition Corporation for $2,090,927 for the construction of our park.
Second. Okay. Motion's been made by Counselor Waterman, second by Counselor Maldonado, uh, to approve ordinance number 1651, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Connell Construction and Demolition Corporation for $2,090,927. Second reading, roll call vote.
Counselor Patton?
Aye.
Counselor Maldonado?
Aye.
Counselor President Hensley?
Aye.
Counselor Sterns?
Aye.
Counselor Waterman?
Great. That motion carries 5 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Spencer. Appreciate it. Uh, item B is ordinance number 1652, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into a contract, amending the contract for the comprehensive plan, transportation plan and UGB work with 3J Consulting, also up for second reading. Don and Randy?
Mr. Hardy, anything to add?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, just here to answer any questions that you might all have, um, on this. We did talk a bit about it, uh, a couple of weeks ago.
Appreciate your staff's work on getting all the grants, um, that are highlighted in the staff report for their work here. Thank you.
You're welcome. We just applied for another set of grants as well, um, this, in this last month for another, um, um, I can, spacing on the amount, I think it was around $50,000 for another grant.
You're keeping our grant, you're keeping our grant writer busy.
Yeah.
Um, my one question I had, and so, uh, we're making, so it's, it's coming up a little bit more expensive than before. How are we looking at making needed budget adjustments at all?
This is within the budget that was approved through the finance depart, finance committee and through council. Um, it's consistent. Um, it's within our budget parameters, uh, for what we were anticipating. Um, it's not exceeding that. So, uh, it's, it's what we anticipated going into that, um, that budget cycle. We've, we've included it in our professional services line item and plant, in the planning department.
Great. That was the only question I had, so thank you. Counselor Patton?
Let me push that. Thank you for yelling that. Uh, I move to adopt ordinance number, uh, 1652, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to amend the contract, adopt, adopt, adopting for the, um, comprehensive plan, transportation system plan and urban growth boundary, scope of work and budget for fiscal year 2025, or for fiscal year 2526.
Second. Uh, motion has been made by Counselor Patton and second by Counselor Maldonado, uh, to approve ordinance number 1652, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into a contract amending the contract for the comprehensive plan, transportation plan and UGB work with 3J Consulting. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Counselor Patton?
Aye.
Counselor Maldonado?
Aye.
Counselor President Hensley?
Aye.
Counselor Sterns?
Aye.
Counselor Waterman?
Aye.
Thank you. Carries 5-0. Thank you, Don. Appreciate it. Um, item C, uh, consider ordinance number 1653, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to approve the purchase of an F-250 truck for $70,000 to use for right-of-way maintenance and declare an emergency. Second reading and Heidi, hello, good evening.
Hello.
Great. Do we have any more details on our new truck that we want to buy?
Nope. Uh, pretty much is all the same. If it gets approved, I'll be making the call tomorrow to hopefully get it. As far as I know, they're still holding one for us, so.
And this is a new to us truck?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions on this matter for anyone?
Are you going to be able to get in and out of it?
I hope so.
Yeah, I saw you.
You got new apparatuses. I, I was going to make a joke that Todd made me come up here, you know, and I'm a Canbyan, he can walk.
Just going to say, okay.
That's what happens when you get older.
Yeah, you're, yeah, preaching to the choir here, Heidi. Um, great. If there's no other conversations or discussion, I will take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 1653, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to approve the purchase of a F-250 truck for $70,000 to use for right-of-way maintenance and declare an emergency.
Second. Uh, motion's been made by Council President Hensley and second by Counselor Maldonado, uh, to adopt ordinance number 1653, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to approve the purchase of an F-250 truck for $70,000 to use for right-of-way maintenance and declare an emergency. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, and it's even in red on my script.
You're doing so good, Joe.
I was on a roll. Sorry, roll call vote, Teresa.
Counselor Patton?
Aye.
Counselor Maldonado?
Aye.
Counselor President Hensley?
Aye.
Counselor Sterns?
Aye.
Counselor Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Heidi. Appreciate it. And I hope your knee gets better.
Me too.
Uh, all right. Item D, ordinance number 1654, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into a collective bargaining agreement, CBA, between the city of Canby, Oregon and the AFME Council 75 Local 350-6. First reading. And is that you and Emily or Emily fabulous?
Yeah. Um, pleased to come before you tonight and let you know that the city's bargaining team has completed table bargaining with AFME's bargaining team. Um, the result is that tentatively agreed to collective bargaining agreement that we're bringing here to council for ratification. So, um, under your charter, because of this, the cost of this contract, you have to do that via ordinance, two readings. And so that first reading is before you tonight. Um, the process was great. The parties had met since March and bargained vigorously and in good faith for, um, what the city's bargaining team believes is a fair compromise. We achieved some things and because it's bargaining, we got them at the cost of some fair concessions. Um, this TA to CBA is, in our opinion, a fair compromise that protects the city's operations and management's rights. It promotes, you know, a good relationship with your AFME represented employees, um, secures retention of current employees, makes, uh, the city attractive in the market as a, um, employer for potential employees. Um, and I think one of your highest priorities, this bargaining ground was squarely falls within and preserves your fiscal policies going over the next three years. Um, so our official position as the city's bargaining team is that we strongly recommend that the council vote to ratify this contract. Um, the SNAF report gives you an overview of the high points, um, that we bargained for in this TA to CBA. And I'm happy to answer questions about that or go through it more, um, comprehensively, but, um, thought I'd just give you the thousand foot now and see if, if anyone wants me to go deeper than that. Oh, and I'm sorry, I missed the best part. Um, earlier today, AFME unanimously voted to ratify on their end, which is great news and just indicative of how good this process has been.
Well, thank you very much, Emily, for, I know that you were on the negotiating team and we had a number of other department heads as well involved in this. So thank you for, I know there was a lot of back and forth and some, we'll just say back and forth.
Vigorous, vigorous bargaining.
Back and forth when they came back. So, um, my one question that I have is, so in the numbers, we're looking at, from a budget standpoint, impact of 3.6 million in wages. Is that an all-in number, uh, Mr. Ely? Or is that just in, in salaries?
I believe it is just wages alone, but I can pull that spreadsheet and tell you.
Okay. And so I guess my piggyback on that is what does that mean for our budget for the 2526? I know we, we budgeted a certain amount as, as a percentage when we were creating the the budget, and now that we've landed on, I think, the number that we budgeted for, are we still gonna meet?
Yes, you are.
In guidelines with the budget and therefore not have to do any shaving somewhere?
Yep, you budgeted four, five, and so you're five percent, and you're one of the contract because it's a 3.5 cost of living adjustment across the board, plus increasing the spread between steps six and seven to five percent from three percent, the percentage all in there is around four and some change, so still lower than your five percent, and then for years two and three of the contract, you aren't accounting for a spread, step spread increase again, so it's just that straight 3.5 percent for two and three. Okay.
Perfect, before motion, any other questions, yes, Councilor Sterns?
Yeah, reading through the contract myself, I'm, in section 9.3, it says all hours worked in excess of eight hours in a day or in excess of 40 hours for a week shall be paid overtime one and a half, which sounds okay, but on the 9.2, it says some workers will get four 10-hour days, and if you were a worker that got four 10-hour days instead of five 8-hour days, it would, I mean, me reading it, it says that the four 10-hour day people get automatic overtime if they follow the 9.3.
That's a great question, I'll double check with payroll, but I believe the city's practice is to not pay two hours overtime if someone's regularly established schedule is a four-ten.
Okay.
So the eight hours over, overtime triggered if you work more than eight hours in a day is for the folks who are scheduled to work eight hours in a day.
Okay, it would be nice if that was.
Yeah, I'll double check.
In writing on the contract.
Confirm that with you.
So it doesn't cause a problem with misunderstanding in the future.
If I'm not mistaken, doesn't that only fall under the 40-hour work week rule, that's not the daily rule?
So this, the 40-hour work week rule is under the FLSA, which says that anything worked in excess of 40 hours is overtime, this existing contract language lowers the standard for reaching overtime, so it has the city opting into a daily overtime regardless of what the overall hours per week is, so if someone who's on a 5-8 works 10 hours in one day but ultimately only works 40 hours in a week, they still get those two hours over eight as overtime, even though the week stays at 40.
Unless they're already four 10-hour.
Unless they're, so yeah, the hypo was a 5-8 employee, but you're exactly right, if that was a 4-10 employee, then that would not apply.
Okay, it'd just be nice, like I say, if contracts specified that.
I would agree, I'd like a little bit more literature or some, something in there that states.
Yeah, I will, I will take it to the union, I can't unilaterally plug that in, but I will talk to the rep about it and see if we can clarify practice with contract language.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Good call.
No, thank you Dana, good catch, okay, any other questions or follow-up comments? Okay, I will take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1654 in ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Canby, Oregon and AFSCME Council 75 Local 350-6 to a second reading on August 20, 2025.
Second. I'm sorry, was that you, Councilor Patton?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Council President Hensley and second by Councilor Patton to approve ordinance number 1654 in ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into a collective bargaining agreement, CBA, between the City of Canby, Oregon and AFSCME Council 75 Local 350-6 to a second reading for us on August 20th of 2025, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes five zero, thank you all, again Emily, thank you and please give my thanks to the bargaining team as well, okay, Mr. Ely, any old business?
No Mayor, no old business today.
Well, great, then let's go and talk about some new business.
Okay.
Civic engagement, oh, I need one of these and give them a loan, here we go, Civic Engagement Academy, sharing and presentation.
Good evening again, yes, so I just wanted to share an update about this year's Civic Engagement Academy, this was the first year that we offered this and it was an effort that came out of the 2024 City Council Retreat and Goal Setting Session, originally it was myself and our HR Director who were to serve as the staff liaisons or staff members who were overseeing this effort, and as our former HR Director moved on to a different, different, not city, a different job, it was, kind of fell on my shoulders and I couldn't be happier with the process, the people that participated and the support from other city departments and the directors as well, so we had 25 people register, the Civic Engagement Academy was held on the second Thursday of the month, it was supposed to be held January through June, we had some ice and snow in February, and so that meeting got pushed to the end, and I think, I've said it, and I think actually Councilor Sterns has said it, that that was a blessing in disguise, because that meeting was the one that was to be held at Public Works with Public Works, Wastewater, Fleet, Transit, couple other departments, and when you're trying to tour a facility like that, you probably want to have some light on the situation, shed some light on the situation, so by having that be the last meeting, it actually allowed for a better tour and a better experience overall, so of course, there were things that we learned along the way, the meetings were always kicked off at 5:30 with dinner, which gave people an opportunity to network and also an opportunity to network with staff, and I think that's one of the things that was helpful is getting to know that, what we've heard, sometimes people say, well, I don't want to go to City Hall, I don't know what to expect, I don't know who to ask for, I don't know anything, and so to be able to really put a face to the name and everybody sits and literally break spread together, it was a really great experience, at the very end, after the last meeting, each member received a certificate of participation, and whether they attended one meeting or all of the meetings, we didn't have everybody that stayed with us the entire way through, so we, as I said, we started with 25 people, and I would say, sometimes we averaged about 15 or so, sometimes a little bit less towards the end, Kevin Aguilar, who was the former HR Director, he had been through this process before in a different city as a participant, so not on the planning side, but actually as a participant, and that was one of the things that he noted ahead of time, so I was very aware of the fact that we were going to lose people or have people that say, you know, I don't care, I'll pick on myself, I don't care about economic development, I want to come for the police and really learn about that, so it was really interesting to see who showed up for what, and of course, life gets in the way, not everybody's able to make all of the meetings, but there was a real core group that stayed with us throughout that entire time, one of those members was Councilor Sterns, and so I was gonna ask if you had any comments on how you thought the overall effort went.
Overall, I was very pleased with it, I'm pleased that the city followed through with it, it was a good opportunity for people to, to experience, and I personally learned a lot of things I didn't know before about how the city worked, which is probably a good idea if I'm a city council, to know how things work, so I was really pleased with the whole process, the only thing, well, I think, the one, the one meeting with the school superintendent, the fire, and that was, Canby Utilities seemed a little bit, a lot in one setting, but, I mean, I think those kind of things you work on as you go through the process, the important thing is that it's been going on and like I say, I enjoyed, I enjoyed my experience in it, so I really appreciate you doing that.
Thank you, thank you very much, and it was, it was something, to be fair, I learned something new every single time we had these meetings, and I have been with the city for just over 13 years now, and I work with a lot of different departments on a lot of different projects, and yet I learned something new and interesting every time, we followed up with our participants with a survey at the end, and very simple survey, you know, what is your name, which we're not gonna share those because we wanted to encourage people to really share, especially if there's something that we could, we could do better, but why did you register for the Civic Engagement Academy, what, what did you most enjoy about the sessions, how participants felt about just the logistics of the meeting, you know, we're telling them where to park, what time to be there, those kinds of things, any recommended improvements, and then anything else that they wanted to, to share, so I have just a couple very brief highlights, so one of the members said about why they registered, and I thought that this really painted a picture from most of the feedback that I received, that it was a desire to become more aware of the daily workings of Canby's civic world and to increase my personal engagement with my community, as far as what people enjoyed the most, of course, we heard a lot about the tours, so people toured City Hall, the Police Building, and then the Public Works Facility, they also enjoyed engaging with each department and the directors and the passion that each speaker had for working in Canby, and I would say that as a member of our leadership team and knowing a lot of the people that work for the city, that passion definitely rings true, and the opportunity to network with other residents was, was high on the list of things that they enjoyed, and then just understanding how the day-to-day efforts are run and how different services interact with each other, again, the logistics, people said they felt pretty, pretty good about that and there wasn't much to report, as far as recommended improvements, you know, trying to understand why attendance dropped, having more interactions among participants, which could be potentially done through breakout sessions, you know, one of them said presenters could sharpen their skills, and not everybody says, oh, there's a microphone, I'm gonna run to it, and that's good, because I'll probably already be there, post-participation opportunity for written feedback, which I think is one of those things that you assume, but calling it out and specifically saying, if there's feedback about any of these sessions, please send it this way, you know, another one just said, and I thought this was interesting, they read the question as if what to say for future cohorts, not just for how the city would go about it, and it was, listen, pay attention, react, and ask thoughtful questions, and then anything else that they wanted to share, you know, so many thank yous for offering this, so thank you to all of you for creating this as a goal and a priority for the city, you know, people said, it was definitely worth my time, I wish I would have been able to make it to every session, and really encouraging people to sign up for boards and committees in the future, someone recommended a graduation at the beer library, which I didn't think was a terrible idea, and finally, another person said, just please offer it again, it was helpful to understand the services available and meet those in charge, and so I, you know, I believe that the plan is to continue to have or continue to offer the Civic Engagement Academy, to run it like it was run last year, November and December is when we would do registrations, I think that the people who have participated will help to get the word out for us and kind of further that reach, and also we'll do communications and marketing on that, and that is the, the end of my update, but I thank you all for the time, but also for choosing to move forward with this project, I think it was very worthwhile, and it was something that if you would have asked me what I thought about it beforehand, I don't think I would have understood how much I would have gotten out of it as a staff person, how happy I heard even from other directors who might not love to present, but then what it, really the impact that it made on the community, I think was, was very, very good and strong, so.
So Jamie, thank you, it did end up falling on your shoulders, but I think you did a great job of rallying, rallying the troops, so to speak, and the other department heads and whatnot to, and team support, so I thought that was really great, I liked the graduation ceremony idea, I thought that was kind of a neat idea to do.
We did give everybody participation certificates, they also received a sticker with the logo and their name on it, which was made by our Public Works Department in their sign shop, and there, we have these pins, there are Canby pins with the seal, and so each participant got one of those, and those participants who weren't able to show up to the last meeting, we mailed those out to them, so, so everybody got those who participated.
Well, and I'm glad that it's gonna continue and start again next year, that'll be, that'll be great, so thank you for doing that, any other comments or questions for the update? Councilor Patton and then Councilor Maldonado.
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for all the hard work that they put into this, and also kudos to Councilor Sterns for coming up with this idea, it is really, you know, as, as a member of council, we have, we have a lot of dreams and aspirations, and sometimes it's hard to get them off the ground, and this was something that he threw out, was adopted by pretty much everybody, and was moved forward very quickly, so hats off to everybody for that, one other thing I will just say is, in the future, something that just popped into my head was, it might, either in one of the meetings, whether it's the introductory one with council and stuff and that, it might be good to have maybe one or two of the star pupils from past academies come and speak and sort of give a rundown of what their experiences, what experience was and what to expect, so that way, new can, new members are hearing from past members of their experience.
It's a great idea.
Councilor Maldonado?
I agree 100% with Patton, that's a great idea, and a great job, obviously all of us echo the same opinion on that, the one thing I would ask is, as with anything that may be new, where do you feel could be the best, the most benefit for improvement on this?
I think now that we've been through this, really refining, one of the things that our former HR Director did as, as part of these tasks was he helped to set up the schedule, and there was an external schedule, which was put on the city's website, and then an internal schedule, so we knew exactly how long to give people to speak and to kind of give that, lay that groundwork for staff, I think refining some of those times so that we have more time for, for communication or questions or whatever it might be, a couple of the, of the sessions went over, so making sure that we're refining from that level so that, you know, we're not keeping people for longer than they think, and certain people had to leave because of other commitments, you know, it goes till 8:00 PM, and so on a Thursday night, and so making sure that people can get out of there right at 8:00 or even before would be beneficial, as far as the, the schedule itself, you know, putting that Public Works one closer to the bottom of the, of the schedule rather than number two, put it towards number five or number six, to make sure that there's light and those kinds of things, but overall, I feel like it really, it went very well, and it was something that, just as far as outreach, I think that staff laid out kind of what, what participants should expect, you know, one to two days before, you'll receive information about, you know, any logistics and anything like that, following it up and making sure that everybody got the PowerPoint presentation, so that even if you weren't there or if you wanted to talk to your neighbor about Parks and Recreation, you could do so with the PowerPoint that you had, so some of, some of it, honestly, where I think you would normally really refine, I actually think that, and I, I don't mean myself, but I think that staff did very well the first time, and I think that there might be a couple little tweaks, but, but nothing so grand that it would really change the look and feel of, of the Civic Engagement Academy.
That's absolutely outstanding, especially for it being as new as it is, I mean, to be able to just come out swinging like that and really have it pretty nailed down.
I think that anybody that participated could agree that I should never be allowed to order food, because that was probably one of the only things, and it's just because I'm always afraid that someone's gonna go away hungry, and so that would be the only thing that I would change for sure on the program.
Great job.
Thank you.
Jamie, the last, I guess, celebration point of this too is that there has been a number of participants from that group that have gotten on boards and commissions and committees for the city after getting involved after just a couple of, a couple of meetings or gatherings, and so, and that's, again, goes to that civic engagement point that, you know, Council Sterns and we were all wanting to increase and drive home, so for those of you that are, have heard about this, didn't get involved, November opens up for signups and hopefully we'll get another cohort of, you know, 25 people that want to go through it again, so.
Absolutely, and honestly, the, the Wiggins are here and they participated, and one of the, one of the middle meetings, someone, one of the cohort members was talking about how to become engaged, and Kim Wigan, who is the Chair of the Budget Committee, was saying, oh, we, we need another person, and you know, is that still open, and so in real time, we were able to look and help to connect, and that's how it should work, and further connecting people that they can feel comfortable asking or sharing, and then also feel comfortable with staff of saying, hey, I'm interested, I want to know more, so it was, it was great to see that it wasn't just staff level down, you should do this, but also really even from the cohort of, oh, I'm already on this committee, or seeing somebody who was part of the Civic Engagement Academy, who then, you know, joined a board and committee, and then even came to, I've seen them at a couple extra meetings, that they didn't really necessarily need to be at, but becoming involved and really showing up and making sure they have a voice, it's like, you know, I work in economic development, it's the concept of someone who starts at a farmer's market and then moves to, you know, a bricks and mortar business, and then, you know, moves to a bigger one or helps somebody else open, that, that you can really funnel people through in a very specific way, so yes, it was great.
Good job, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Mayor's Business, as I stated earlier, I just got back from vacation, so I don't know what's going on, Fair Week is coming up, so Canby battening down the hatches, get out your boots, get out your cowboy hat or cowgirl hat and get ready for the fair, thank you to Canby Police Department for National Night Out last night, I'm sorry that I missed it, but I heard it was an amazing turnout again and well-attended, so thank you to them for putting that on and hosting that event, and then also for your calendars at home, Canby's Big Weekend is August 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, so Canby's Big Night Out, Car Show, Music in the Park, all sorts of fun crazy stuff downtown and throughout Canby and around Canby, to be honest, so get those on your calendar, I will have Clackamas County Coordinating Committee update not until September, and then I do have a Regional Commission on Transportation later this month that I'll report on probably for the next meeting and get all the down. for the next meeting, and get all the down-to-dirty TriMet, ODOT, fun conversations that go on with that. So, we will start with Council President Hensley.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
I did get to attend the National Night Out, the Grill and Chill, so kudos to Cambie PD, Cambie Fire, Cambie Center, Cambie Staff. It was a great event, again, lots of kiddos running around, they're getting their backpacks, and Lieutenant Trow in his ridiculously tall chef's hat again, it's very fun to watch. And of course, it's always good to see how many times Chief Trow can get dunked, so that was a very good time. Thanks to everybody involved in that. I also went to the Chamber Luncheon yesterday, it was a very busy day yesterday, it was held at the Fairgrounds, as the annual August 1 is. So, kind of the unofficial kickoff to the fair, so again, as the mayor said, get ready for the fair. I don't have any liaison reports yet, because it's the first week of the month, and all my stuff is yet to come. But since we did talk about the fair, shameless plug, I have a friend, her name's Jackie. She was on this little singing show you might have heard of, The Voice. She's playing Thursday night at the fair, so go see Jackie Ror. That's all I got.
That's great. Councilor Patton.
So, for me, let me get to that page. I promise it's not going to be long, so don't worry.
He's flipping pages.
So, I just wanted to throw out something to, to add to the list of things, and it popped into my head. I'm hoping that the Frank Cuts Force memorial signs that were put out at the street corners for the Cuts Force cruisin' are still around, and get installed temporarily for the cruisin' in his, in his memory. So, that, that is that. I attended the Elected Officials Farm Tour that was put on by Clackamas, Alma, Loma County Farm Bureau. We got a chance to tour Cut Flower Farm, a local dairy, a small dairy, as well as Woodchew Tulip. Really awesome businesses. They, it was a very good mix of elected officials there, there was a counselor, there was some, there was a counselor from West Lynn, a counselor from Oregon City, the newest member of the Clackamas County Commission, who was recently appointed, was there, among some other community partners. And so, it was great to see, it was great to see people there and hear what folks had to say, some of the stumbling blocks that they have, support that they can get to do their activities, and it was a very good event. I also attended the Grill and Chill last night. It is awesome to continue to see how big that event gets every year, and with the partnership of the Cambie Center doing the backpacks, I almost got a little frightened, because the backpack line was very close to the hot dog line, and it turns out they were two different lines. So that, luckily, I did not stay in the backpack line and get to the end of that and be like, "What's going on here?" So, yeah, so it was great to see so many people there, and, and interacting with the PD, and a big thank you to all of the PD members who came out and, and put in the extra time to be there for, to interact with the community. I will also do a bit of a shameless plug for CAT. I have been using the cat bus a bit more. I bought a truck that is needing some work, and it just so happens that two of the cat bus stations are near the place that I go to, and so I have been riding the cat bus quite a bit. It is super economical, because it is way cheaper than using Lyft, it's only a dollar per ride, so that's been great. Make sure you bring cash. And then, also, it, it's, the scheduling has been very smooth. It's been like, within a minute or two of when it's supposed to be there, it arrives, so I make sure not to dawdle, and make sure my tukus is in gear. So, that's been good. I will just throw out, and I didn't get a chance to say this during the Heritage Landmarks Commission update, but I did not get a chance to attend their meeting this month, they had skipped last month, I did not get a chance to attend this month, because girls volleyball, high school volleyball is starting, and Monday night was a two-meeting credit night, and you never miss one of those. So, I will make it a point to be sure to be here for the next one. And that's where I'm at tonight.
Great. Councilor Maldonado.
Nothing to report at this time, however, I would like to just echo one more time, because I don't think it's said enough, that city staff, you guys work your absolute butts off for everything that you do, and there's not a single one of us within the city that aren't extremely appreciative of it. So, great job, you guys all deserve a huge pat on the back.
Well-stated. Councilor Sterns.
Too early for liaison reports for the months, so nothing really to report. Only one thing I was wondering about, and maybe the administrator can, can talk about it, is, I understand he's still the interim city administrator, so we're probably going to either need to get a new one, or, I think you're doing a great job, by the way, I'm just wondering.
Thank you, Councilor.
When that particular piece of business will be settled.
I believe that Mr. Eli and I have had a couple of conversations about that, and a lot of that has been letting him get kind of some things taken from out here, brought down to here, so it's a little bit more manageable, and then also letting our HR director get in, get settled somewhat, and acclimated to what's going on. But we are looking at having that conversation brought to the council here probably the first part of September.
Okay, that's good.
Councilor Waterman.
We still have some positions open on the, some positions open on the Bike and Pet Committee, so we can use some help, and I think there's two, at least. The library, they have, they're in the process, they've got at least, I think, about halfway done of the, the new workforce, or, we talked at this area where you can go and get help in finding work and getting resumes, et cetera. So, that is, has been in process, it might be done by now since the last, the last meeting. There's still, our director, library director's very involved in the special task force for LDAC, that is helping LDAC figure out what to do for funding, and possibly, you know, how to get all the libraries on the same page. All libraries have different funding options, it's pretty, pretty wild how different libraries have different funding from different areas, some get more, some get less, and, and so they're all trying to work together to figure out how they can make it more equitable. And so, that, that's in process, and they're hoping to have a recommendation to the Clackamas County Commissioners by the end of the year, I believe. So, it's a lot of good works going in there. The Grill and Chill was really fun, there was a lot of people there. I'd like to give appreciation to the, the young officer that was voluntold for the, the taser demonstration.
Oh, yeah.
He took it well. It was a very popular event, I guess you can imagine. But, other than that, the hot dogs were good, Chief Trow got dunked pretty good, good music, so, and it was, you know, we pulled in and trying to get down the street, there's, the cars were parked all the way down on all, all directions, it was pretty wild, and it was, it was a great event. And that's all I have for now.
Great, thank you. Did I leave anyone out, since I jumped around the order? Okay, no. Councilor Davis is not here, perfect. Number 12 tonight, city administrator business and staff reports. Mr. Eli.
Thank you, Mayor Hodson, Council. Keep it fairly brief tonight, I did have a handout for you there with the, so you can follow along with the three topics that we're going to cover. First being power issue updates, the second being mid-year budget discussion, and the, and we'll finish up with the Urban Renewal Agency discussion. I'm happy to see the chair here this evening's with us, that's exciting. First, before I start, on the Grill and Chill, the National Night Out last night, the police chief asked me to please pass along thanks to Cambie Rotary, Kiwanis, and Cambie Center publicly, those, those groups in particular, tonight. So, I do that on behalf of Chief Trow. Okay, moving along to power updates, the first, the page in your handout is a cover letter that's going out under my signature to DLCD, written by your legal team, and your planning director, Don, who's here, he'll be able to send that out. It's essentially what you, the motion you made at our last meeting, directing staff, that's all that sentence says. So, we'll get that out the door here tonight, from Don's computer, I believe. And I don't think there's anything more to say on that piece of business, other than we are convening a conversation with Bonneville Power Association, Portland General Electric, and Cambie Utility, here at council on September 17. That was the earliest all those agencies could get in front of council.
So, September, all three of those will have representatives from those agencies here?
Yeah.
Okay, so not the August meeting, but September?
September, yeah. There were some vacation times and different things that played into that, so that's when we could get everybody on the same card.
That'll give Councilor Patton and the rest of us time to get riled up.
A little more time.
Yeah. Pop for pop for the kids.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that they're, you know, I don't know if we're going to have, I think we're going to need, I'll defer to you, Councilor Mayor, probably an hour for that discussion, do you think? No?
Two hours.
Two?
Yeah.
Two, so, we'll need to prepare them for that, if that's your expectation, two hours, because they originally were asking for 30 minutes, so, so we're going to go two hours.
Well, it may be a matter of them having 30 minutes, the rest of their time on, you know, Q and A.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Don and I will, will work on that with legal, and as you know, we share the same legal
counsel with the utility, so.
Keep it by the door.
Okay, so, I think that's it for power updates, so if there's any questions, yes, Councilor.
I just wanted to throw a couple of things out as I've been, oh, my button. I just wanted to throw a couple of things out as I, as we've been, as I've been sort of thinking at home about this whole thing and stuff, and back during my time on the Planning Commission. From what I understand, you know, when, when people apply for, you know, new developments and stuff, when they come into the city, based on what happened with OLCC, it seems that the, the trigger to really see if they can be hooked up to most of the utilities is by the time they're ready to break the ribbon at the finish line. And I think in the process of talking about updating our codes and stuff, we really need to do that assess, we need to bake in there that that assessment as to whether they can get water, power, sewer, internet, all of those things is actually done before the application even starts down the pipe, is something that I would like to just, you know, put on, sort of put on a bubble for things as we move forward with that. I think we also need to, and the mayor kind of joked about this, but I, I, I've been reading some articles about data centers that are going out in Hillsborough and other areas within the, within our neighboring cities. I don't know how my fellow counselors feel, but I really think we need to bake into our, our codes that we will not allow data centers in, period. Doesn't matter the size, doesn't matter what. They suck a tremendous amount of power, and I have a fear that with us being near the river, that that could entice them to come as well, because oftentimes, I know some of the ones that are out in the gorge are there, because they use the river water for cooling and stuff, and we have our own water problems that we need to try and consider. So, anything in the process of updating these codes that we can bake in to prevent those sort of things from happening, I think would benefit our community in, in the long run. Another thing I will say is, I was quite surprised that the announcement that was given to local media about our, what we were doing at their last meeting, as far as I can tell, was never picked up. There's been no information provided. I personally think that this is an issue on a national level, and I'm really disappointed that they are, that they are not willing to, to cover this. At the Farm Bureau meeting and tour, I chatted with a counselor from West Lynn and from Oregon City about this particular issue, and have told them that they really need to work with their cities and see where they stand in this thing. This is not just a Cambie issue, this is a Willamette Valley issue, and a whole statewide issue, and I'm, 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 I'm pretty disappointed in that. Not with city staff or anything like that, you folks did your job, you got the information out there, but as far as people saying that they, they did not see this coming, I really think that that is unfortunate.
Sorry, don't waste your thought.
I was getting ready to move on to the next thought.
Okay, good, well, let me jump in on that, to that point. I was surprised that we haven't seen anything in local papers, have we seen anything pop up in terms of trades?
No, I, I mean, what we've seen so far is, is very little communication. There, there is the word on the street, I mean, here in Cambie, there are developers that want to sit down and discuss this issue, but it's a very small number, and, and so that, that has not really been spread, that, I think there is knowledge of this, and I don't know how widespread that is, in terms of the industry, back to your point, Mayor, I know in the industrial warehouse industry, that it was not unnoticed by Sequoia Logistics and Trammell Crow, in particular, dealing with urban growth boundary expansion, because they were looking at that as well. So, that, that is, and that, that was told to me by Trammell Crow, that that word is out there, at least in the warehouse industry sector. But, but people that have come to the city and ask for discussion, that's been a very small number of folks so far. But just a couple points to your, your thoughts. You're absolutely right on the will serve, the electrical will serve letter, it really is at the very end, which is very unfortunate in terms of that process right now, and you agree with you, will serve letters, and like other cities, water and sewer, those items are typically dealt with, where you have to get that confirmed at the front end of the project. I see this discussion on the moratorium discussion, being that the formula of this is going to be something we're going to have to figure out with Cambie Public Utility, because it's a collaborative between both jurisdictions. And that would be a filter of what that process looks like, before someone's able to go through that vetting and address that. And obviously, there is the one megawatt threshold issue, which is fairly high for smaller developments, it doesn't really affect them or residential, is my understanding, but there's still going to need to be some vetting through Cambie Public Utility, and I do agree with that front-end load piece of that, and the code elements that go with that. On the data center, if that's something that is the plurality of the council, we easily could add that to some code amendments that we're going to be addressing. There are some low-hanging fruit items that we're already going to be putting through with council, and so we could definitely add that into that mix. How we structure this on that vetting process on the front-end load of this will be determined over the next several weeks with Cambie Public Utility, we don't know what that looks like, clearly we can add that to a code amendment as well. So, I do agree with you 100%, you shouldn't be able to get all the way down to powering your building and not be able to get power to it, that, there's, that's something wrong with the, the system, it needs to be fixed.
Excellent, and then the one last thing I will say is, I, I will just throw this out there, that I think it, as this grows legs within the community, and I'm already starting to hear some misinformation from folks, and trying to clear that up. Pardon me just a second. It might be good to create a very prominent page of our website, or link on the website that goes to some very, you know, distinct Q and As about, you know, what, what does a megawatt look like, and does this impact me being able to build a home, or get an electric car, or do these various things? So that that way, we, we continue with, if, if the media is not willing to get the message out, then therefore, we need to do it. And I think it would be, I think it would behoove us to, to, granted, it will take some time to flesh all that stuff out, but to, to at least get that process going. And so, those were the things that have come, come to my mind since our, our meeting the other night, to, to kind of look at.
Great. Yeah, I think an FAQ piece, and, yeah. Mr. Eli and I will talk about some other strategy pieces, because I have some thoughts as well, so.
Yeah, I noticed the city of Sandy had FAQs on their website, their moratorium for water and wastewater today.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Councilor Waterman.
I just wanted, we could also point to, maybe we just link to Cambie Utilities website, because they do have a public notice posted on their website about the issue as well, and that's, that's been up there for a little while.
That's a good idea. Take, take the lift off of us necessarily. Come. Thanks. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Page two. Page two is just a snapshot of your, you know, the first page of your new budget that you approved. And I know since I've came, came on board, I've had regular meetings and we've talked here at council about your interest in having, I, I think you've called it a mid-year budget discussion. You're familiar with that term here. And I wanted to kind of dial in on, do I have direction from you to go talk to and work with my finance leadership on, okay, what does that look like? If we were going to come before you, when would be an ideal time? And I know you get, I, I've talked to the finance team as of today, you get monthly reports year to date. I think a new one is being worked on right now, actually, from June. But, you know, starting to think about, okay, where are we looking at? How do, how do we look? You guys just came out of budget. What are some must haves versus nice to haves? We've had conversations about that. How much money are we generating versus what services we're providing? So sort of a higher level look at this budget of yours and, and that might not necessarily be your typical, choosing my words carefully, your mid-year budget traditional look, but something maybe a little different than that. So I wanted to get some clarity on, can I put that in motion with the staff and what would that look like? Because mid-year would be more like January probably, and then we're getting into the next calendar year and we're up against it. And that's something I think I heard the first couple of meetings when I was here, we want to do this as early as possible. And so that means this fall actively working with you on sort of a current state, you know, where are we forecasting? How are we looking before we get too late in the calendar year? So that's why this is on my agenda tonight to discuss with you.
Are you throwing that out to us now looking for answers or are you putting it out there for us to noodle, as this council tends to do, and come back maybe?
Yeah.
With some thoughts and ideas?
I think the latter.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to put that out there as something that's very high on the priority list for staff, for the city administrator. And, you know, we are currently in flight with a recruitment for a new finance director. The first, our HR director is here tonight, but, so he's helping with that, he and his team. Our first review of those resumes are August 19. So that might coincide with having a nice budget presentation with your new director and new staff and taking a look at where, where we're at, based on the budget notes that you had this, this last budget go around.
I, I guess just as a starting point.
Yes, Mayor.
Randy, to me, what's going to give you the best look in terms of data to present to the council, right? We've usually, and I, I hear the point, like mid-year is, you know, kind of the, January at some point, we've closed out.
Yeah.
December, we know where we're at, at the end of the calendar year going into it. Is that too late for course corrections and coinciding with the start of the next budget piece? So I guess I don't, I think I would need to know from you and the finance team, is having, you know, data from July through November enough information to determine if we've got to look at course corrections or we can breathe a sigh of relief that things are tracking? So I, I guess that's, that's my question for you.
Right, and I'll go back and check with the finance team and I'll finish this thought and then, then we. I think we still have another 30 days of charging back to the last fiscal year to true up where things are coming in, June 30. So we'll have a, if you give me another month, we're going to have a really good, solid look at the last fiscal year, where, where the plane landed. So we'll know more at that point. So this is more of a teaser tonight of it's coming. Because I know it's very high on your radar. I've, I've heard from each of you, I believe. So, and I know that Scott and Katie are working on finalizing and they're going through audit right now. So this, it would be too early probably. So.
Okay.
I would say in, in a month, we're going to have some real numbers for the last fiscal year.
Yeah, I think.
From what I, I hear from them.
I think having the landed fiscal year for last year will be a good barometer check and then.
Okay.
And it may just be one of those as we're seeing month to month information or even those, even if I think for me, just knowing what maybe anomalies might have occurred in the previous month that just kind of maybe like.
Yeah.
You know, hey, we're watching this or hey, we're keeping, you know, this, this was a one-off and this is how we're course correcting. Just even those kinds of information pieces help me out. I don't know about the rest of the council, but.
Yeah.
I know that, that's kind of how I run things with my, my finance team and my business office manager is like.
Yeah.
You know, what are, here, we just had this expense, here's this anomaly, this is going to blow out this piece, so we got to adjust for the next two months or whatever. But so, yeah, again, that's just my side of things. Councilor Patton, did you have your hand up? Sorry.
Yeah, I would say as far as me, I, I have always had some strong thoughts on this one and I'll just throw them out now before I forget. I think I like the idea of maybe something in September to see kind of where the previous fiscal year ended. And how initial trackings are going with going into the new fiscal year, if there's anything that's really popped up in between. Because essentially May, June, July, August, September, that's four months after the last Budget Committee meeting. So it might be good to do that. But I also think that having that sort of mid-year budget review in January, not December because it's really busy. November, you know, are we getting our tax money in? You know, some of that stuff doesn't come in till later. Really doing that in January, we, we're now well over halfway through the year. We have some good numbers to compare budget to actuals and then go from there. I will throw out something that came to mind and I can't remember if I mentioned it during the Budget Committee meeting. I would actually like to see the Budget Committee meetings moved up a bit. So I, the council needs to get the budget sooner. We get the budget like three days before the Budget Committee meeting or a week before the Budget Committee meeting. It does not give the council or the Budget Committee members ample time to digest that document.
I would take it a week in advance, not, which would be nice.
Yeah, a, a week or more, a week at the minimum. And it seems like, you know, we have the three meetings and if there's something crazy that happens, we use that last meeting, we're really up against the eight ball for doing another emergency meeting if something happens. Because then we essentially need to get it moved along in order to hit all of the dates. So I think moving the meetings up, you know, a week or so, I know that that will, you know, essentially require staff to move up all of their projections and their timelines and stuff. But I think if there's a decision to do that now, rather than, you know, in four months, that can be, that can be adjusted. I just, we came, with, with everything that was going on this year, we came dangerously close to not having all the eggs in the basket in time. And I would really like to, to avoid that if at all possible.
Thank you.
Oh, and the last thing I will say is I will promote this again. The, the mid-year budget review, in my opinion, needs to be set up just like the regular budget meeting where all of the members of the Budget Committee and the City Council sit around the table and chat as a group. Not them in the audience with us up here on the dais. It needs to be the same exact format as the, as the regular budget. And if there are some things that might be lightning rod issues or things that are off that have those city staff members here to be able, those department heads here to field those questions.
Yes.
On the subject, I would like to see some, as soon as possible, possible some revenue and expense forecasting for the next budget year. This year I was sort of, I say annoyed to find the proposal of lots of cuts that I didn't hear about until right when the budget was proposed. I think it's only fair to everybody who works for the city and deals with the city to know if something's going to happen, one, that they know ahead of time and two, we have a chance to avert it ahead of time. Because when we basically get the budget document the day before and, and I hear we're cutting half the city or something like that, which I'm not saying it's happening, so don't. But I'm saying if something like that were to happen, I would like to know beforehand and not just say, this is the way it is and, and nothing can be done to change it. Where if that's something like that had to happen, I would like to say we have worked all year to, to prevent it from happening, so.
Hold on a second.
Welcome back, Canby, sir. We had a technical blackout, so you were watching YouTube, you saw Jason Patton's frozen face by the sounds of it.
And I will apologize that you were subjected to that for so long.
So to continue with our business, I think we've got, we're in the midst of having a conversation on budget stuff, but I think we wrapped that up. Was there more? Yes, Councilor Waterman.
I would, I just wanted to put out, if, like we talked about getting updates, like I think even a quarterly update, just to keep things, keep on top of things, wouldn't be a bad idea. It doesn't have to be like a full fledged move, but at least we have sort of a quarterly update, keep things top of mind, keep things flowing and then we can have our, our, you know, mid-year, et cetera. But I think that would be something that we can do.
Yeah, they're certainly proud of the, I heard today about the monthly reports that they send out, so we'll make sure those keep coming in.
Yeah, but just talking specifically about budget.
Right, thank you.
You got it.
Okay, moving on, lastly, an update here, just asking for your consensus to convene the Urban Renewal Agency. I think there's some discussions we would like to have and that's the last page in your handout. Jamie put together sort of some high level discussion topics for you as the Urban Renewal Agency to have at our, at a future meeting to be determined, maybe sooner than later. That sounds good, it's over coffee. I did want to pass along that the team met on First Street and Kittleson's bringing 30% drawings back. So I know that's a, one of the high level projects that you're anxious to see happen. So lots of discussions on this page to be had with, as a Canby Urban Renewal Agency. So if there's a consent, we'd like to can, get, have your direction to convene the Urban Renewal Agency. Okay, we'll get that scheduled.
Yeah, we can probably do that as a first round piece on the next City Council meeting, or do you need more time than that?
No, that sounds great. We'll be ready, thanks.
We'll be ready, can't wait.
You said that with a very concerning grin.
It was very concerning.
It was supposed to be uplifting and exciting. This is as good as.
Yeah. Exuberant, exuberant.
All right, we'll, we'll take it.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, end of report.
All right, thank you. Next opportunity for citizen input, again, these are usually follow-up items or maybe things that have come up on mine, but just a reminder again, keeping it to three minutes. My first card I have is Mr. Perez. Lot used for access.
I will make this fast because I want to go home too. My name is Greg Perez. Good evening, city staff, councilors, and Mayor Hudson. This has to do with the Pearlman LLC property. Purchasing is not a common practice and, and Councilor Patton stated that, other than the state roads that we purchased and they gave us money to bring them back up to, to date. And then the city, we know the city's going to consider the legal, financial, and the practical implications of making a decision. And we'd already discussed that. Council President Hensley already stated that they're going to get with the parks and then you guys will discuss it again to see if it's a priority. But even though this has been spoken about for a long time, it really hasn't been a priority. And it even envisioned or for a project, right now I don't think the city's budget is, would allow it to purchase property, to in turn hire for engineers, contractors, to bring everything up to code and to standards according to the city. I don't think the money's there and I don't think it's a smart move. We're not in the business to do that. And if you start it once like Councilor Patton stated, then we're going to be doing it again and again. We're not in the business to do that. So I just want to thank you for bringing that up and I, hopefully that everybody takes a good look at this and they make the right decision. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Second card I have here is Scott, is it Loughlin?
Yes.
Regarding development moratorium. Come on up, sir.
Thank you, Councilor Mayor. I was able to talk with Don Hardy during our unexpected break and he answered the question on the moratorium on development. I'm a local developer and my question was, in the press release, it doesn't mention what a large load is. And so there were questions on what constitutes a large load. But that, you know, talking with Don Hardy, that answered that question and the discussion from earlier, so that's it.
Perfect, glad, glad we could do that. It's nice to meet you, sir, thanks for coming. All right, Teresa. Action review.
Well, you approved the consent agenda. You adopted ordinances 1651, 1652, and 1653. You approved ordinance 1654 to a second reading on August 20th, and that's it.
Great, just to draw people's attention on the dais, I guess people being councilors, on the last page, there was an update regarding public works stuff, so please take a look and read through that. There's a lot going on with public works, so. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I think I'll vote nay.
Good night, Canby, we're adjourned.
Everyone can go home, except us.